All right, welcome everybody. It is Monday, September 22 at 6 o'clock. The meeting is now called to order. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If you all could stay standing. A beloved member of our community, Anapam Wali. We lost him this weekend and, you know, several years of service to our community, survived by his family, and so I'd like all of us to take a moment of silence to honor
First on our agenda, we have open microphone. First on open mic, we have Janet Moran, 218 Rangeway Road, number 294.
Just hit green, the green button. See this button that says?
Says push.
And once the green light's on, you're good.
Okay. I didn't know if I was going to be able to talk during open mic about Article 38 or if I wait till you get to that part, which is number 20 on your agenda.
Yeah, I would recommend open mic to speak on that. And then, just as a reminder for the room, for those for open mic, it is timed. It's three minutes and that's just so we can get through the agenda.
I'm gonna read fast. Okay. My name is Janet Moran. I'm president of the Swanson Meadows Phase Two, and I'm also a town meeting member. This year, the developer has now, wait a minute, I'm gonna, excuse me. Last year, this petition for rezoning the golf course land was brought before both the planning board and the select board, and it was voted against by both boards. It's still too early to present the zoning request to any of the town boards or a town meeting for all the reasons that we submitted to the select board in the package that you received. The covenant that Swanson Meadows signed with the town of Billerica in 2000 was to put a recreational overlay on the residential zone so there could become a golf course, after which the golf course land would then revert back to being zoned rural residential. The acreage of the golf course would then allow for approximately 40 to 45 single-family homes. The developer is asking the town that there be an elderly housing district overlay on the golf course property instead so that he can build a huge number of condominiums. Last year, they presented a plan for 192 units to both the select and planning boards and to use, and to us, the abutters, which surrounded the golf, which surround the golf course. This year, they are floating approximately 160 units as a conceptual number. Remember, this plan is only conceptual. Do not be misled by fancy slides showing a pool, picnic area, dog park, art studio, yoga studios, et cetera. Those images are stock photos that are taken off the internet from all different kinds of locations. Both the developer and his attorney have stated to us, the abutters, even so recently as a meeting at the Elks, that they asked for all the abutters to come, that if this rezoning were to occur, they would build as many units as the town planning board would allow them. The difference between 40 to 45 homes and 160 to 192 condo units when it comes to traffic and noise is highly substantial, and is directly related to the amount of housing put on this land. The number of personal automobiles going in and out, the community noise to our butters, package deliveries, FedEx, US Postal Service, Amazon, UPS, food deliveries, DoorDash, Grubhub, the increase in calls for ambulance, fire department, and police, even the amount of visitor traffic would be incredible. In order to build this 160, more likely 192 condo development, thousands of trees would need to be taken down, eliminating 100-plus acres of green space in Billerica. Our communities, both 216 and 218 Rangeway Road, have been polled and asked if residents were for or against the developers' rezoning plans to go forward. Both sides responded in the negative. 216 was 73.5% against, and 218 was 87.5 against. Last year, the developer stated that they would fully pay for the sewer betterment and both communities' costs of our sewer tie-ins, the crushing of our septic tanks, and the repair and repaving of our private roads and driveways, if the abutters would support them with the select, planning, and finance boards and a town meeting. But they refused to sign a formal binding document stating such.
Janet, you are on, both as a member.
I am? Boy, I didn't talk fast enough. I'm gonna pass this over to the next person.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Next on open microphone, we have Michael Pendleton.
Evening, board members. You're getting two for one tonight. All right. I just originally wanted to bring attention to the fact, and Madam Chair, you brought up the point of Anapam, Anapam Wali. He was our board, he was a board member, he was a colleague from, well, 10 years. He was on the board for 10 years, and he did one heck of a job. He was, he was a real bright individual. I mean, until I read his obituary, I never knew he did this and that and the other thing, but he had it all, he had it all put together. He was a great board member. He, he was, he did his homework, checked everything out, and I just would like, first, I wanted the board to, you know, have a moment of silence for him, but also, if I could, maybe, maybe the board could send out a letter to his, to his wife in appreciation of his, you know, his service that he's done for the town. Hold on, one second. There was, today, this afternoon, there were three members, three of us members, Mike, who's the chair, myself, and Bobby Arcomando, and Liz, went up to the service up in Wyndham in New Hampshire for him, and it was well-attended, and it was interesting to watch the culture, the Indian culture and the service that they do. It was really kind of neat, you know, different to watch.
Yeah.
Mike, you got anything you want to say?
I just want to thank the board for recognizing Anapam at the beginning of the meeting with that moment of silence. It's much appreciated, and he'll certainly be missed. He was always very punctual and, you know, always prepared and just a fun guy to be around. So, we're gonna miss him down there, and hopefully, you know, we find somebody to replace him that's, you know, that can be just as good.
I just mentioned to Chris a couple minutes ago, appreciation that you put the bunting up. Bunting is up already for him. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board.
Thank you.
Next on our open microphone, we have Grace, 2G7 Carson Street.
Hi, Grace.
Hi, thank you. Just a few things. I was just wondering what the update would be on the audit and on the website. I know last year, I think we initiated $60,000 to update our website, and I don't think anything has been done, so I don't know what the holdup is or if somebody could give us an update on that, and of course, the audit, which I know was started prior to our new town manager, so if you can give us an update at the next meeting. I know a lot of people have asked that question, and we really haven't gotten a lot of information. And, oh, and the other thing is, updating or uploading the recordings for minutes in various committees. I know you're short-staffed a little bit, but I didn't know if maybe somebody in the IT department could help facilitate that in the interim until you get somebody to help you in the office, so, because a lot of people do depend on those recordings to watch and kind of prepare themselves for town meeting as to what's going on. So, I didn't know if the town manager could maybe ask somebody in IT to help facilitate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on open microphone, we have Annette Naza, 180, and over road.
Oh, sorry. I just thought where I registered.
Oh, okay. So, no, no, you're good. Next on open microphone, we have Esther Wabuga.
Same thing, I'm sorry about that.
No worries about it. Next, we have Caroline. Next, we have Rachel.
Same thing. Sorry about that. Is it?
Next, we have Palavi.
A quick question. Can I have my three minutes to per?
No. No, we, our open-mic policy is each member of the public has three minutes uninterrupted. I'm sorry.
So, I just want to say?
It's in the policies and procedures.
It says that the, it's been done multiple times this past course.
If I may?
Yep.
That has been done multiple times on various different boards, as well as, I believe, a town meeting. But I'd also say in our policies and procedures, we say that anything that's scheduled on the agenda that a resident wants to speak on after the board has all had an opportunity, we'll recognize them to speak, so if they're all coming about Swanson Meadows, maybe it would be more appropriate for the length of the presentations that we deal with it when we're dealing with the article.
So, you're gonna have three minutes now, and then, you know, if time allows, you know, we can, you know, speak during the articles as well.
Madam Chair, I just, can we clarify for the audience? I think they look confused that you are allowed to speak right now for three minutes.
You can speak right now and then, yeah.
Okay, so can she speak on my behalf?
What is the policy on someone speaking twice?
It's 2023. We'd have to let everyone speak for six minutes.
Can you please bring the policy up, Madam Chair, and read it?
Mike, do you know what that policy is, if we can speak?
We've had legal opinions because there's, there was a select board in the state where they were treating different people at open mic in different ways, and it was a violation of the First Amendment, so I'd recommend strictly following our policy to be in the best interest of respecting the First Amendment, so we don't put ourselves at legal liability. With that being said, you are able to speak for three minutes.
Madam Chair, I would, excuse me, just one second.
Sorry, go ahead.
I would recommend that the secretary allow the chairwoman to make the decisions in the proceeding.
You can continue.
Okay. Thank you. So she cannot speak on my behalf?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, my name is Paulo Vidaia. I'm at 216 Rangeway Road. I just want to say briefly, I'm against the rezoning for the golf course for all the reasons that she's mentioned and will continue later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that we've sent in a package to everybody, so I hope you all consider that and read it through, and we would appreciate a legal counsel, feedback from that letter that we've sent to all the selectmen. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next, last on open microphone, I'm sorry, it's, last name is Gown.
Prakash Govind, thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
218 Rangeway Road, Unit 211. So again, I'm continuing with the presentation that Janet made earlier about the residents' opinion about this rezoning of the golf course. We are not very clear about how this is going to impact us, and we fear the worst with this rezoning, and we feel that if this step is allowed, that this can be used as gaining momentum for making other concessions for gaining building permits or whatever else that goes forward. But I just want to bring up a few more points, continuing what Janet has already mentioned. So this year's petition is once again being brought by a few members of the 216 Rangeway Road condominiums, and it was signed by 13 people, 10 of them were married couples, so the number of people really signing on to this is very small. There are 44 households in 216 and 36 in 218. But again, the majority of the people in these condominiums are not clear as to how this will go, so 73.5% in 216 and 87.5% in 218 do not want this to go without a lot more clarifications, and there seems to be some legal issues as well. So there's a whole situation with the golf course restaurant function hall. That's another problem that we've been facing, that we are facing right now. It is not a problem in the future, it is a problem that we are facing right now. So when the zoning turns back to rural residential or if it is rezoned as elderly, what happens to this building? We don't know. If the clubhouse will continue to stay there, they had, there's already been petition to expand the clubhouse to allow 80-plus people more to join there, but right now, with the current capacity, they have license to hold functions, I believe, until 1:00 AM, and the nearest unit is only 100 feet from where they are. So, on weekends or whenever the parties are held, we can't sleep until 1:00 AM. The noise is very bad. We have gone and approached them, we have asked for things to work out with them, but nothing has changed. We have called the police several times about this to come out and at least ask them to turn the noise down because it is really disruptive to where we live. So if, so we have no idea what's going to happen to this building. Is this building going to stay there and expand in its footprint, or is it going to be completely taken down, put somewhere else? How will the noise and function that will be permitted there affect us? So that's another big unknown for us. So, these are the reasons why we are not really, you know, we are asking that you don't allow this rezoning without a lot of clarity, both to yourselves and also for us, the residents. So the petition for rezoning the golf course is also, it is also not clear that even though the residents who are supporting this are bringing this petition, we don't know if the parcel B and parcel B, both the owners are behind this. I believe one of the owners is behind this. I want to point out something about spot zoning that came up. It was the planning board's vice chair, Kelly Sardina, stated last year, and she said, "The rezoning of a single parcel of land that differs from the surrounding zones, often for the benefit of a single property owner, and not in accordance with the area's comprehensive land use plan. It can be considered illegal, arbitrary, or discriminatory practice because it creates an exception to zoning rules for a particular property, potentially harming public welfare or established neighborhood patterns." So that is another concern, you know, is this going to be looked at as a spot zoning or it is for the entire zone? So those are some of our concerns.
We are past the three minutes, but understood that, you know, it sounds like there's some confusion and clarity needed on a lot of the plans that could potentially go there, so.
Yes, especially the abutters. So, we need a lot more clarity on what we're getting involved with, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to the select board and send a letter of thanks to, on Anapam Wali's behalf for his service to the town, to his wife, Neelam.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Just a quick question. Somebody online has raised their hand, so, okay.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could, please. Policy 2.7 addresses open mic, and it does not state that a resident cannot donate their time if they've already signed up, so the information that was provided by the secretary was inaccurate. We also do dedicate the first 30 minutes of the meeting to open mic, so if there aren't 10 people that have signed up for open mic, you have the discretion to allow somebody to speak a little bit longer if it's necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dawn, is there someone online? Okay.
It just, it says Swanson Meadows, Billerica. If you could unmute yourself and go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Rosa Alshewski. I live at 216 Rangeway, Unit 1104. I'm a trustee and I'm also president of the board. As people mentioned here, we held a vote, and 73.5% of members opposed the rezoning. Our request is very simple. Please do not advance or recommend this article. There are multiple issues with this law, and we raised these issues a number of times. So, first of all, there are recorded restrictions, a number of them. There is a restrictive covenant, and there is a conservation restrictive, restriction. The restrictive covenant designate this parcel three to a golf course, assuming it's gonna continue indefinitely. So there is a companion powerful attorney that specified that this use intended to be unlimited in time and perpetuity, and authorizes the town only to extend or renew. So the zoning cannot change it, and we ask to consider that and not to advance this article. Then there is an issue that the developer proposes elderly overlay, and many people, which we also believe that elderly people definitely in Billerica deserve, you know, housing, but this elderly overlay doesn't trump restrictions, you know. However, you know, we may, we may want more housing for elderly, it doesn't mean that restrictions should not be restricted. There are environmental restrictions. They are, part of the law was a toxic waste for a pharmaceutical company, and it's not buildable. There are sewer infrastructure, infrastructure problems there. The, the sewer line that is built on the Rangeway Road doesn't have capacity for this development, and the developer stated that they will have a private sewer system. The issue is, there are a lot of wetlands there. There is a conservation land. There is a part of the land that is not allowed to be deforested. On top of that, the same developer built our sewer system and the sewer system of the Phase Two. Their system failed, and they needed to invest $1 million to fix it. Our system is failing, and we are just given an extension until the line is ready. So there is a serious concern, health concern, environmental concern, especially because we use well water. There is an issue of the clubhouse. The clubhouse is an accessory and a part of the golf course. Splitting it or turning it into a restaurant or entertainment venue, as the developer suggested, will make the traffic worse, will make the noise worse, and you already heard how much problem the noise poses. The zoning must be unified. It's a part of the bigger lot, and the zoning must apply to the clubhouse. So we ask the board not to advance this article until all questions are answered. We would like to get answers to all concerns that were raised in the letter to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on?
Mike Parker had his hands up and he's down.
Mr. Parker, do you still wish to speak this time?
His hand down, I assume not.
Okay.
It was an accident.
Next on our agenda.
Madam Chair, then may I continue?
How does, Dina, does she?
She has.
Okay. We still have till 6:30, so if you want three more minutes, I'm gonna follow policy.
Okay, this year's petition is once again being brought by a few members from 216 Rangeway of the condominiums. However, it was only signed by 13 people from 216, and 10 of the signatures are from married couples, representing five households. So this only represents eight households out of the 44 that reside at 216, and 73.5% of them voted negatively against it. Absolutely no one from 218 Rangeway has signed this petition. I'm going to skip over some because they've talked about the golf course clubhouse. Plus, there's a whole situation with the golf club restaurant function hall. In 2030, when the zoning changes back to, supposedly that's the year, rural residential, or if it's, can't because it's in perpetuity, and if it's rezoned as elderly, what happens to this building? You can't have a restaurant function hall in a residential zone. This was brought up by one of the selectmen at last year's select board meeting. Besides that, the developer and his attorney, Brian McGrail, have stated that they would continue to use this building as a function hall slash restaurant in the future, and even possibly tear that building down and build a much larger function hall that would be open to the public and be used for all types of functions. The noise complaints from our community have led to numerous calls for noise disturbance up until 1:00 in the morning with the aftermath noise in the parking lot. Our townhouse units in this vicinity have been nothing less than tortured. Young people that, young children that can't sleep, adults driven inside off their back decks by loud bands and subwoofers, people singing and yelling on the golf clubhouse deck, which then causes the adults not being able to sleep. The developer and his Lisi have already gone before the Board of Appeals in an effort to enlarge the clubhouse now, which was not granted just because of these issues. Our community has spoken with the developer and Lisi, asking for noise reduction into the night, but to no avail. They do not care that they are disturbing our homeowners. The town should have never granted them an entertainment license in a rural residential area to begin with. We were unaware of the initial request, and therefore, we were not in attendance at the meeting. Last year, the planning board's vice chair, Kelly Sardina, stated that this would be spot zoning. The definition of spot zoning is "the rezoning of a single parcel of land that differs from the surrounding zone, often for the benefit of a single property owner and not in accordance with the area's comprehensive land use plan."
You are past the additional three minutes, so. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have vacancies on boards and committees. We have, for the Barrika Agriculture Commission, there's a vacancy for one associate member. For the Cabinet Land Reuse Committee, there are six total seats open with staggering terms where they expire. For the Historic Commission, there's one member seat open and one alternate member seat open. For the Historic District Commission, there are two alternate members, one of which is a center district resident, two alternate members, with one being a center district resident and one being a Mills district resident. For the local cultural council, there's two member seats open, one of which is to be voted on tonight. For the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, there's one member attorney seat open, one member banker seat open, two resident seats open, and one member realtor seat open, five total. For the Scholarship Committee, there are four member seats open. For the 250th Committee, there are two member seats open. And those are the select board appointments, but we also have the moderator appointments, which are appointed by the town moderator. The General Bylaw Review Committee, there are five member seats open. For the Long Range Master Plan Committee, there's one member seat open. For the Yankee Doodle Bike Path Committee, there is one member seat open. For the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, there are three member seats open. All other announcements may be viewed on the Town of Barrika website. Next on our agenda, we have proclamation and public recognition. Our first proclamation is the Billerica Girl Scouts are turning 100. And if I can read the resolution.
Is there anyone here in the room for?
Want to come up?
I'll come up. 100 years. Yeah, if you could stand. Thanks for coming out.
Oh, you want to?
Proclamation honoring 100 years of Girl Scouts in Barrika, whereas the Girl Scouts organization has for 100 years fostered courage, confidence, and character in girls across the nation, and whereas the Girl Scouts organization has for 100 years fostered courage, confidence, and character in girls across the nation, and whereas the Girl Scouts of Barica have empowered generations of girls to explore their potential, embrace challenges, and become strong and passionate leaders, and whereas this centennial milestone celebrates the commitment, achievements, and enduring spirit of Girl Scouts in shaping a brighter future for our community. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Barrika, proudly recognize and congratulate the Barica Girl Scouts on 100 years of remarkable service, leadership, and dedication to making a difference. So.
I'd like to take a picture as well. It's so short. All right? Probably easier. If someone?
All people in that.
Come there? Okay. We'll just punch in here. If someone? Come there? Okay. We'll just punch in here.
Say cookies.
Perfect. Thank you, Don. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
Welcome, congratulations.
Our next proclamation is Down Syndrome Awareness Month for October. Proclamation recognizing October 2025 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, whereas Down Syndrome is a genetic condition that affects thousands of individuals and families in our community, and whereas Down Syndrome, and whereas recognizing the unique talents, achievements, and potential for those with Down Syndrome encourages respect, equity, and opportunity for all. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Barrica, does hereby proclaim October 2025 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and calls upon all residents to honor and respect individuals with Down Syndrome and their families, and to celebrate the value of diversity and inclusion in our community. Signed, Gillian Pavita, Chair, John Burrows, Vice Chair, Daniel Darris, O'Connor Secretary, Michael Rosa, Member, Dina Favreau, Member.
And community members, Jen and Jamie Pitts, on behalf of accepting it on their beautiful daughter, Cora, we're not able to make it tonight, but we'll offer this to them. Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have public hearings. First public hearing, National Grid and Verizon number 31182613. National Grid to install one J O pole, pole number 8950 on Allen Road, beginning at point roughly 635 feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Rolling Hill Road and Allen Road. I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Brian, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Brian Southup. I'm representing National Grid for these next few hearings. We are located at 1101 Turnpike in North Andover. Are there any questions from the Select Board regarding this petition?
Selcon Rosa?
Thank you. You're aware of the DPW statement that the Water and Wastewater Division are not notified by Dig Safe, and you have to notify them directly to have the water and sewer lines marked out?
Correct.
And did anybody reach out to you from the abutters list with any concerns?
No.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak or online on this?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve National Grid and Verizon Plan number 31182613.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next public hearing, National Grid and Verizon, number 31181799. National Grid to install one J O pole, pole number 1450 on Pollard Street, beginning roughly 295 feet south of the center line of the intersection of Salem Road. The pole will be a 50-foot class H1 pole between poles P14 and P15, and be located on town property intersected by Salem Road and Hayden Road. I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Brian? Brian, are you there?
Just as, just as was said, this will be supporting pole 14-50 to be assisting in keeping, sorry, the words left me, but this is to help keep no equipment to be put on these poles to support Billerica's distribution system.
Thank you. Just for the record, the same with the Water and Wastewater Division for this application. And was there anybody that reached out to you on the abutters list of any concerns on this one?
No.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the room or online that wants to speak on this agenda item?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve National Grid and Verizon Plan number 31181799.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Next on our agenda, we have public hearing, National Grid and Verizon, Plan number 31168498. National Grid to install one J O pole, pole number P250 on Cook Street at the beginning, beginning at a point roughly 240 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Boston Road, midspan between poles P2 and P3, Cook Street. Pole will be located on town property intersected by Boston Road and Covington Avenue. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So regarding pole P2-50, this is also going to be supporting new equipment to increase the liability of distribution system in Hayden Road.
So just to get it on the record, this also requires the Water and Wastewater Division to be notified separately than Dig Safe. And has anybody from the abutters list reached out to you with any concerns?
No, no one's reached out.
Okay. I also want to say about this one, if you look at the DPW comments, this pole is proposed to be in a paved sidewalk. It must be widened. If the installation of the pole reduces the sidewalk clearance to less than 36 inches wide, a street opening permit would be required for the sidewalk widening for work if required. I have to say, we've worked really hard to get telephone poles out of sidewalks, and I will not be supporting this. I think they need to figure out another way to do it and not be putting it in or creating some type of dogleg around a pole in a sidewalk. So, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Favreau? I actually have basically the same notes on that from the DPW. It's not in line with our complete streets policy and improving our walkability, accessibility infrastructure, so I can't support this either.
Anyone else from the board? Is there anyone in the room to speak on this agenda item or anyone online?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve National Grid and Verizon Pole number 31168498.
What was it?
If there's no second, the motion fails.
Yep. Motion fails.
Next on our agenda, we have interviews, Town Council interviews, Brooks and Durensis.
Good evening.
Thank you for accommodating my schedule.
If you want to just take a few minutes, introduce yourself, especially for those online in the room.
So I'm Paul Durensis. I'm from Brooks and Durensis. I've been Town Council now for a year and some months. The, the firm has been covering the legal needs of the town now under a retainer-type Even though there is a contract, or there was a contract, we are willing to negotiate any billing arrangements that are comfortable for the town, as long as it works for both We note that the rates that we've quoted are about 20% less than that of the other firm that you have been interviewing. If I could say a word about the past year. We took over from prior council, and there was a transition. And that transition took a lot longer and was more difficult than we desired or that we expected. It was one of the hardest transitions that we have encountered. The transition was difficult because we had limited information from prior Town Council. We were tasked with investigating the quality of legal services that had been provided to the town in the past from that prior firm. And that prior firm had stopped working for the town before we came on board. So there was a flood of backlog of work with which we were bombarded from the start. And while we were engaged in our transition as council, the town was facing other upheavals happening at the same time that we had to assist with, such as three different town managers over the course of time that we've been here in Billerica, changes in the Select Board makeup, changes in the Select Board chair, various disputes between town officials. These many upheavals would be difficult for any town and for any Town Council. Nevertheless, we got through it. We got to learn about the town and its unique customs and practices for its operations. We hired an attorney who was a long-term, 27-year resident of the town to be the contact person with the town, who assisted us in familiarizing us with the town. We got all kinds of background information from him and helped us to get to know Billerica. So now that when we get called by somebody, we know who they are, and we know how to During the past year, we accomplished a lot for the town. I have a whole list, but we, we've answered numerous procedural questions. We answered numerous open meeting law issues and public records issues. We handled a number of litigations and real estate issues and transactions. We reviewed certain Select Board policies and procedures. We helped various town departments and town boards and committees on a variety of issues. We assisted with the preparation of town meeting warrants and articles for both the two annual town meetings per year and special town meetings. We helped with zoning issues, contract reviews. We had success in the courts, where we won a summary judgment relative to a lawsuit against the Billerica Building Commissioner. We successfully resolved a North Road complaint. We obtained a settlement agreement. We successfully defended an open meeting law complaint against the town clerk. We obtained an order of dismissal and an official finding that Mandamus' claim against the town was not appropriate. We assisted with the gift of Rangeway Road property to the town, and with the ongoing development of Yankee Doodle Bike Path. We assisted with the AT&amp;T water tower scraping contract matter. We provided advice regarding council on aging release of information. We worked on flood plane, flood zoning matters. So at this point, we've invested a lot of time and energy into Billerica. We've learned your ways of doing things, your customs, your traditions. We figured out ways to address various operational issues. We consider the past year as an investment in a long-term relationship. Now that we are on top of the learning curve, we represent stability for you. There is no need for another year transition for a different firm, because you and I and the town have achieved that transition by hard work over the last year. And you have a law firm that knows you and what you want. By way of background, our firm has 20 lawyers and nine paralegals. We have just hired a 30-year experienced land use and real estate attorney who will be joining us on October 1st. We have a real estate department that has seven attorneys experienced in the cutting edge of real estate work. They are doing real estate acquisitions and dispositions every day, and they have seen it all. And these lawyers are all available to you. Now, the chairman of the Real Estate Department was going to be with me here today, but because something came up, he is here by Zoom, and I wonder if I could ask your indulgence and allow him to say a few words about the real estate services that we provide the town by letting him speak via Zoom. John Ruggieri?
He can speak, John. John, go ahead.
Am I able to be heard at this moment?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Oh, wow, fantastic. I was afraid I was not going to be able to get through, but this is great. First of all, thank you very much for allowing me to speak for just a few moments, and I echo Paul's sentiment about the work we've done for Billerica to date and what we hope to do on a go-forward basis. I'm the chair of the Real Estate Department at Brooks and Durensis. I've got 30 years' experience in all sorts of real estate matters, and I have represented a number of towns and a number of municipalities with respect to all the various things that come across your boards on a day-to-day basis, whether it's procurement of properties for schools, procurement of properties for fire departments, procurement of properties for parks and whatnot. I've been involved in overseeing the Yankee Doodle Bike Path matter, as well as bike paths in other towns and in other jurisdictions. And it's been a pleasure to work with the administrators of the town, the chair people, and the various select persons, who, you know, I know your time is challenged always, and you always have a lot on your plate, but working with you and working with the town managers, we are able to accomplish and get things done, as Paul said, in a timely, efficient, and cost-effective manner, most importantly, for the taxpayers of your town. So I'm sorry that I could not be there in person this evening. I would be happy to discuss any of this with any Select Board member that would like to call upon me and further discuss the matter, but otherwise, I hope you will support our application to continue to be Town Council to Billerica, the town that we have come to know and hope to continue to know for time to come.
Thank you.
If I could, John, could you speak a little bit about our new land use zoning lawyer?
Yes. Attorney Kremmons, who is joining us in October, as you noted, Paul, is a 30-year veteran of land use and zoning matters. He's going to be a critical piece to our overall real estate department in that he brings a breadth of experience to land use and zoning that, even my experience of 30 years, which is pretty considerable, I never solely devoted myself to that, and that is what he does. So I think he is going to be a new and good voice addressing any concerns with respect to real estate, real estate zoning, and land use in towns such as Billerica.
Thank you, John.
All right. We just have some questions for the board here, so Selcon Rosa, we'll start with you this evening.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Paul.
Hi, Mike.
I know we've had some bumps in the road along the way. You know, I know that you've been working with Mr. Dillon to review some of the billing, and I think you've made some headway with that, which is good. and I think you've made some headway with that, which is good. I know that when we negotiated the retainer, which I was on the negotiating committee, there were certain things in there that were listed out that would be covered. And, you know, we've had multiple meetings. You've been at some of them. I think the last one we had was with Lenny Kulpman, and we brought forward a lot of the issues and concerns that we had had then. And he was pretty agreeable to a lot of the things that we brought forward and was going to talk to you about what we could do to fix it. Maybe some of that has been done. But I can tell you that some of the stuff that we get is not always clear and concise. Now, I know you hired another attorney as an intermediary that has helped with the response time greatly, Mr. Marrera. And I see when a legal opinion goes out, he responds almost instantly and makes sure it gets off to the right person. And that is great, but my understanding is we get billed for his time at an attorney rate. And...
Not true.
No?
It depends on the matter. If it's a litigation matter, and he adds substantive value to that, he will get billed as a litigation matter that's outside the scope of the retainer. But 90% of his work is within the retainer.
Thank you for that clarification. And I know when we first sat down and we started talking to you about the transition, obviously, it was a little different dynamic of the board, but one of the things that we talked about was what was transferred to you from KP Law, and that there was a lot of missing information and stuff that you probably should have had that you didn't get. And you guys did do a lot of work to try to play catch-up baseball for some cases that were coming up, and I appreciate that. But one of the things that we had asked for was for you to track all of that time separately. And I know early on, that wasn't happening because the board was going to make a decision as to whether we were going to try to recoup those funds from KP Law, that you had to reinvent the wheel because they didn't transfer the information over. I know one of the issues you were working on, I actually sent information that I had through conversations because it had been around for so long to help get you up to speed. I know that the DPW, some of the people involved in that that I knew about, sent information as well to help. These are all things that should have been transferred over in the files and weren't. And you cobbled together what you could, but we shouldn't have to be trying to augment what you should have got from KP Law. And we wanted to track all that. And I don't know that that's happened, at least to the degree that I expected it to be, so we could try to recoup those funds. And that's, it's a little frustrating because we're very, very clear on the fact that we wanted to do that. You know, one of the things in, you listed in your perspective, is one of the things you worked on is the AT&amp;T water tower and some of the scraping matter. And that was brought to light by myself when I knew we were going to be going forward with the water tower. This is prior to Mr. Dillon being there. Mr. Maine was the town manager at the time. I said that there was a zoning board of appeals special condition, that in that condition, that AT&amp;T would pay for the scraping and painting of the water tower. I sent that off. It went through to your department. Mr. Huxham responded to it. Fred was also involved, the DPW director. And early on, and I've got the email here, you know, Mr. Huxham said, "This message will confirm the telephone conversation this morning regarding the water tower painting and scraping. During the conversation, I recommended that the town request that the current special permit holder to agree to scrape and paint the water tower because the facts that we have been provided indicate that approximately 28 years have passed since the special permit was issued in 1997. This makes enforcement of the special permit condition at AT&amp;T shall scrape the water tower at Crosby Hill difficult in light of a 10-year limitation on a special permit enforcement action pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7." So I felt frustrated with that because they're still using our water tower. We now have a warrant article in for $2.5 million to paint the water tower. And the more I thought about it, and as I was going through the warrant articles for the weekend, I said, "Whenever we give people the rights to use our property, whether it's a water tower or the Masonic Building or anything like that, there's always a lease agreement." So I started digging around, and I found the lease agreement. And honestly, I would have thought that would have been brought to light by an attorney because you guys do this stuff, you, not you personally, but Mr. Huxham. You look at this stuff and you say, "Well, if they're using bolting and welding antennas onto a water tower, there has to be some type of an agreement." And even ask the question so somebody would know enough to go looking for it. And I found the agreement. It's, I don't have the signed agreement, but I have the last email with it attached, which was from Mark Rich at KP Law, and it was March 6, 2015, which is just over 10 years ago. However, it's a self-renewing lease that requires under Section 5, "Landlord agrees that the tenant's ability to use the premises is contingent upon the suitability of the premises in the property for the tenant's permitted use. The tenant's ability to obtain and maintain all governmental licenses, permits, and approvals, or other relief required of or deemed necessary or appropriate by the tenant for the use of this premises." So the way the special conditions for the zoning board of appeals is one of the things that they need to maintain, in my opinion, which is right in this lease agreement, which is a five-year self-renewing lease. So it was approved by town councils in the email that I had on March 6, 2015. So it's probably renewed twice. It may be coming up for another renewal, or it may have just passed. But in my eyes, that, if that all has to stay current, and so would the zoning board of appeals special conditions, and maybe there's some loophole I'm missing, but I'm perplexed by the fact that an attorney that deals with this stuff wouldn't have said, "There's got to be a lease agreement somewhere. What do you guys have?" And send somebody off to go looking for it. That never happened. And we're talking about $2.5 million. If there's a way that we could recoup even part of that. And there's also a significant amount of money out there from this contract because they're supposed to pay us, and I'm assuming we're getting it, $56,192 a year rent, and then there was an upfront payment of $108,626.42. So anyway, I just, I need to have trust that all avenues are being explored, especially something that's going to be $2.5 million to the taxpayers of Bilirica. So I appreciate the road we've gone down and where we're at. And I got to be honest with you, I'm perplexed as to what to do because you're right. One of the, one of the things that I liked about Brooks and Durensis when we first hired you guys is that you were significantly less money than the other firm. That being said, we've spent significantly more money than we've ever had in the history of Bilirica from our previous firm, which I think we had for close to 10 years. So the savings argument has kind of gone out the window. I know that you talk about all the work that you've done under the retainer that is over and above the $11,000. And that's good, but it took a long way to get there. I mean, the retainer was being billed almost nothing initially from the buildings that I saw. And it wasn't until most recently, when Mr. Dillon really dug into this thing and went through it line item by line item, that that all started changing. And I honestly don't want to go through another learning curve with another town council. And it's the old adage, no offense, "The devil you know is better than the devil you don't know." We could be right back to square one again with somebody else. So it's, it's a frustrating situation. I wish that once we got some of the initial stuff out of the way, the road is a lot smoother. I know you've taken some actions to try to do that, and I appreciate that. But there is a lot of frustration. So, thank you.
If Jerry Daras open?
Thank you, and thank you, Paul, for your firm applying to this. I'll be very straightforward and blunt with you. I have dire concerns that Brooks and Durensis is just not capable of representing a town like Bilirica. And I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. I'll treat you the same way that I treated the previous Apple Canal or last meeting and go through some questions, and hopefully, those concerns can be alleviated. My first question's just kind of regarding your firm as a whole. Is your firm municipal, like, is municipal law your specialty? You're a municipal-only firm, or do you have all different types of clients?
We have departments. We have a municipal department, but we are also diversified, so we do other things. Like, the real estate group that you just were introduced to does both municipal work and private work. And we think that's an advantage because we have a broader perspective. We're able to handle a wider range of issues that come up. We've seen it all. I mean, we've, we've purchased a church from the Archdiocese of Boston, which is quite a different process than one would anticipate. It's not this simple little thing, particularly where the church would like to take the position that you can't use it after you buy it for certain things that they figure are not consistent with their beliefs. So to unravel all that stuff, you need more than just a limited municipal lawyer. You need the broader scope.
How big is your municipal department? How many towns do you represent?
We're working for seven towns, and we have a total of 20 lawyers. So if you do the arithmetic, we have almost three lawyers per town.
Well, no, because you do all their work, so it's not three workers for each town.
But they're available.
Okay.
Whereas the other, the other firm is the, is the reverse of that. They've got 27 towns and 13 lawyers, so they have a half a lawyer per town.
Okay.
You get more attention from us. You are more important to us than, than you're being one of 27 or with KP Law, one of 100.
Okay, I guess that's a way to see it. My next question is in timely response. Government needs to get stuff done. Our employees have to do their jobs. As an elected body, we have stuff we have to do, and we kind of want to do it in a timely manner, as fast as possible. If a legal opinion that we want to review before a meeting, before we make a decision, we want to get that in time so we can review it and make the most professional decision. And after being town council for a little over a year, you've wrote multiple opinions for us, but I have a problem with a lot of time to take so long to get a legal opinion. For example, you mentioned the reorganization. Relatively basic move. Governmental parliamentary bodies across the country reorganize quite frequently. We regularly do it each year. We kind of just were looking for the okay to make, unless there was some legal issue that was going to come up. It took over a week to get, why should something, just a basic issue where we kind of want a confirmation, or if it's illegal, something telling us that it's illegal? Why should such a basic legal question take so long for us to get an answer for?
Because one of the peculiarities of Bilirica is that every select board member has access to town council, and we were getting contradictory directions from select board members.
So you weren't able to answer any of them?
No. At, at the end of the day, we put politics aside, and we try to answer based on what the law is. And that produced a result that didn't satisfy anybody because it wasn't what any of the people who were asking the opinion was, were hoping to see. It wasn't a question of validating what was being done. There were some steps that needed to be taken, some additional steps that we were recommending be done.
Okay. Thank you for that answer, but if we use an example like the warrant right here, you reviewed the warrant, gave legal opinions on it. That's not politics. That's not different board members asking for something. Why, the warrant, when the first warrant comes out, the preliminary warrant, as we get closer to town meeting, it gets trimmed down. It gets smaller, easier to review. Why, when you write the legal opinions for the preliminary warrant, why are you, the warrant's the same. Your opinions, you send a first round of opinions. Some are wrong. You take it back, "Oh, wait, wait, we'll give you another one." And then I had a rules committee meeting that we were going through two of my articles that are in here, and then they were all sent 4:00 PM, the, the legal opinions for it. The meeting was at 7:00 PM. I didn't, I didn't check my email in those three hours. I guess that's on me. But I look at it, and I'm like, "Wait, that legal opinion ain't quite true. That's, that's not, that's not right." And then you go back. Why, why is there a back and forth? Why don't you do the thorough review the first time around so we're not going back and forth?
Because we're also editing the articles and making changes in the articles, number one. And number two, one of the issues that we've had with Bilirica over the last year is that we often don't get the full story. So we get some of the information, and then more information comes to light later. Just a fact of life in this town, but the additional information then needs to be taken into consideration as to how it would modify the, the opinion that we gave.
I just don't think that justifies the answer because this didn't change. So just to wrap, I, just, I don't think that confirmed, you know, reassured any sort of confidence in me because I, we need timely opinions. We need opinions that are based in the law, not on what you think the client wants to hear. We want to hear the truth, the law, what's legal, what's not illegal, not what we're asking for.
I approve your article about the...
I'm not making this personal. I'm talking big picture. It's a big-picture problem. One more question, last one. At a representative town meeting, when there's a motion to move a question, what vote is required by that?
So that was dealing with an article...
I'm talking, yeah, it's majority.
It was dealing with a law that said that votes on this subject matter require a majority vote.
Can I, can you not interrupt me? I asked a question at a representative town meeting. When there's a motion to move an article, what vote is required to make that motion valid? To valid, I'm not asking for a backstory. I'm asking that simple question. What's the vote required? That's all I want to hear.
For the subject matter of MBTA zoning, the issue isn't decided.
Okay.
There is not a clear answer on that.
Okay.
Okay, I think that answers my question. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Paul, still any questions?
Yeah. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thanks. You're welcome. Thanks. Hey, Paul, thank you all for applying. I have the same concerns as everyone else, you know, response time, especially for our department heads, you know, they get calls from residents all, all day, and the turnaround time on them. And I think, touch on, select mandaros, O'Connor, I don't, I don't look for decisions on how I want things. I look for decision, I want the law, so when the next resident asks me, I can say, "Hey," you know, vice asks, you know, the chief, "Hey, what's the speed limit in Bilirica?" "Hey, speed limit's 35 here. It's not going to change." When the next person asks, that's the law. So I don't look for something to be decided in my favor or to get me off of a charge to, you know, plead a case and try going it that way. We need the law, so when you ask, the next person comes in, "Why was that decision made? It was based off of this." You know, "Why was this zoning issue done? It was based off of this." But I think response time for the department heads is huge. You know, Mr. Dillon, I know Dawn, I pawned a lot of stuff on her. I'm sorry, Dawn. But the response time getting back, because once you give someone bad information, your credibility drops down. And I think, got to do better at that. And, you know, I know our bills have been astronomically high, you know. I think, I was on the original committee when we interviewed you and we had you come in, you know, it was, I think it was an $800 bill we got charged for the initial meeting with me, and I threw one back at you for a couple hundred bucks, and we kind of negated that. But I think the response time and what we have in the retainer, you know, what covers it, you know... it. You know, you think open meeting violation would be basically a template letter. All right, here's your initial response to the AG's office. It's cookie cutter, the same entrance. It could be the same letterhead going over and over, and I, we get hundreds of those, I think, this year. All good for me. Thank you.
If that was a question, could I answer it?
So, we specifically put a guy in charge of making sure the questions get answered timely. They are getting answered timely now. At the beginning, as I said, we were facing a flood of backlog of legal questions that hadn't been addressed because they hadn't been addressed by prior council. The issue about changing opinions is that we get a request that sometimes doesn't include all the relevant information. Then, when it becomes known to other members of the board or to other town officials, we get this response like, hey, there's more information than you were told by the person who asked this question. And here is this information. So, our job is to answer the question asked, not to be a private detective, to audit the town, to figure out what the truth is. So, if you ask us, what's 2 plus 2, we're going to tell you 4. But then, one of your colleagues calls up and says, the true facts are 3 plus 3. And if the true facts are 3 plus 3, we're going to tell you, the answer is 6. Both answers are correct, but we don't go conducting investigations on every question. If we conducted, we get a lot of questions. If we're conducting investigations on every question to determine, was everything told to us, what the truth really is here?
Our policy is, the chairman is to be, or chairperson is to be CC'd on every email before you respond. There was numerous times, emails that after the fact would get sent to the chair with responses and leaving out that key information. Not including phone calls, but not privy, you know, privy to those. We don't know what other phone calls be going on and what gets, you know, billed out for that, but that's right in your contract, the chair's to be CC'd on all emails and all that. And I know that's not happening. It wasn't happening on several occasions.
You brought that to my attention. I made sure it happened thereafter. So, over the course of a year, things changed. That was part of our learning about the customs and practices in this town and the expectations that people had. We thought if you got a copy of an opinion, that's what compliance meant. We didn't know how to be before, during, after every correspondence.
I like the whole book. I just don't read the cover.
We know that now.
Get the whole story that way.
We know that now. We've learned. That's part of the transition. And any council you hire is going to have the same issues and the same... That's not the way most towns operate. Let's put it that way. So, it's a learning curve for any lawyer to do this. We learned.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Durantis, for submitting your response to the RFP. I will preface my statements and questions with, I actually was glad to see the thorough opinions that were included in the preliminary warrant. That was a change from past practices over the last year. That said, though, it has not been my experience for the last six months that the firm has been responsive whatsoever. Any calls that I have made or left messages for have not been returned. The one and only time that I requested an opinion in July, you responded that you had just returned from vacation and to forward it on to Mr. Huxham, which I did. I never received a response, but we were billed for that. So, I know that we met an executive in January, and I was very straightforward and transparent with you about how I felt at the time, and I was hopeful that some of the things that we agreed to at that time would improve. And I think some of the things have, but I think that there is still a level of trust that needs to be established. So, my one and only question would be, what would the firm do differently if you were chosen?
Well, again, we do have this tracking system that we do with no other client, in which we report every week what we think we've been asked and what its status is. And if you don't see your name on there, and you've asked something...
I don't receive that report, so I don't even know what report you're referring to. I have never received a copy of that report.
So, we do a report every week, and every request that we receive is logged in that report as to when it's received, who's working on it, what its status is.
Who does that go to?
It comes to myself, Mr. Dillon, and Dawn, and a lot of that was part of the request to have more transparency to understand what, you know, what's coming out of retainer, what's not, whether they're using...
Right, which was my ask, Mr. Rose's ask in January. We requested that, so I've never, ever received a copy of it. So, I'm operating from a perspective that really nothing has changed since we had executive session because I'm not being informed by the board or administration staff that we are receiving this information that we requested be set up, so...
We can send that out to the rest of the board as well.
Yeah, okay.
We can send it to all the board members if we're so instructed. We were told to send it to the town manager.
We can send it to the whole board. That's fine.
So, again, the question would be, like, what would you or the firm do differently? Because obviously, we all have the same concerns so far. The chairwoman hasn't spoken yet, but essentially, it's, you know, response time, differing opinions, but more importantly, establishing a level of trust that the information we're being provided is true and accurate under the law.
Yes, on that last point, again, I want to emphasize that we are often told an incomplete story.
I understand that. I do.
And we don't know that we're told an incomplete story until someone else who knows the rest of the story tells us what the rest of the story is. That's why I use that analogy of 2 plus 2 equals 4 when it turns out the true facts are 3 plus 3. We don't undertake that kind of investigation into who said what and why and what the, all the factual nuances are. We're expecting the town manager or the person who's asking the request to distill it down to a request. Like, on the AT&amp;T Tower, the question was, is this still good? And the answer is, no, because it's a 10-year term. If they wanted us to look at a lease, they would give us a lease. They would say, what is the meaning of this lease? And I know you read the terms of the lease, but listening to what you said, it wasn't clear that, in fact, it's enforceable. I'm happy to take another look at it now that I know there's a lease, but you didn't find that lease until recently, from what you said. It was not supplied to us. So, when these questions come in, are we to audit the town continuously? And the expense of that is enormous. Instead, we have to rely on you. It's like going to a doctor. When you go to a doctor, the doctor's going to ask you, what's hurting?
Right.
And if you tell him your toe is hurting, when in fact, it's your nose that's hurting, he's going to be focusing on the wrong issue.
I understand that. I understand the analogy, and we've discussed it many times in the past. What would be your recommendation to improve that going forward, I guess, would be my follow-up question to that because we can have comparatives and, like, analysis of 3 plus 3, 2 plus 2, your nose hurts, your foot hurts. Well, how are we going to fix it? That's the premise of this whole process. We need adequate legal counsel, and we've discussed this many times. And I certainly, I think that there have been improvements. I do. Is it to a level that I personally would expect? We're not quite there yet. So, I need to know, in order for myself to make the right decision here, what needs to be changed in order to fix this?
Well, I have to say, I'm shocked that you're not getting the weekly reports from us. I think if you saw the weekly reports, that would either comfort you or put you on notice that, hey, you requested something and your name's not on here and lead to the inquiry. Why? What happened?
Right.
That's the whole point of our logging these things in, keeping track of them, and talking, which you thought we were talking to all of you. We're supposed to get feedback as to, and also as to priorities. So, if we get 10 requests for legal services on a single day, and we were getting, during those transition months with all that backlog, we were getting numerous requests per day. It would have been nice to prioritize it and to say, look, we have a meeting tomorrow at such time, but we get all of these requests, all these meetings going on. They have to be correct, and we're going to tell you, and we got to the point where we know that we have to give you the correct answer. Sometimes the law isn't clear.
Right.
And when the law's not clear, we can tell you that there's a case that said this and a case that said that. It's not clear. But where the law's clear, and I know John wants a clear answer because he said he wanted a clear answer, sometimes there isn't a clear answer. So, we try to give you the components that would support one position or the other position, but we'll give you advice that we think you should do X as the conservative way to proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Dillon, would you like to ask a few questions?
Thank you. A few of my questions were asked, but you had mentioned that you have 20 attorneys on staff and represent seven towns. How many of the 20 are actual municipal attorneys?
16.
16?
I mean, anybody who, everybody is pretty much involved in the municipal work, but there are some who are specialists. We have an immigration attorney, for example. And yes, from time to time, a town might have an immigration issue, need our help, but she's primarily dealing with having somebody be able to work for the town from the point of view of human resources, not from the point of view of the town trying to get out of liability or whatever. So, most of the attorneys do some municipal law.
Do you have any attorneys that do solely municipal law?
Yeah. Yes.
How many?
Six.
If your firm were not selected, how would you see a transition? Because obviously, you spoke at the very beginning about how difficult it was for your transition. How should that transition go?
Well, let me tell you, I would never do to anyone what was done before. I would always try to protect the town, always make sure that there's, somebody is taking care of everything. And if someone else was selected as town council and they weren't aware of something and there was a deadline or whatever, I would pick up the fumble and make sure the town was protected.
Thank you.
You mentioned just, you know, Barica being unique in the fact that we have, you know, several select board changes, town manager changes. These changes, you know, I'm sure most towns go through a lot of these changes. I don't know if it's necessarily unique to Barica, but I think for us with, you know, we have elections, you know, coming up again next year, and then a couple of us are new to the board. You know, oftentimes, like, in my experience, reaching out for direct, you know, answers, I know you use the analogy of 2 plus 2 or 3 plus 3, but sometimes, you know, especially with five different people here on the board, they very much believe that the facts are 2 plus 2, and someone else believes that the facts are 3 plus 3. So, in scenarios like that, I know that you said that the law isn't always clear, you know, but from my perspective, in those situations, especially when you have, you know, two, three, four, five different opinions here, you know, our expectations would be that we could rely on you for a clear answer, to be able to say, no, the 2 plus 2 person is incorrect. It was actually the facts are 3 plus 3. So, you know, there's going to be, I know, just even in my short period of time here, that we have had a few scenarios that we've had to reach out to you for, and, you know, it's been, you know, my experience, whether it be accessibility, availability to attend, you know, important meetings, having folks available and the response time. It has certainly improved just in the past month or so, from my experience, but to Deena's point, you know, I think that we can, you know, start forwarding the reports and things like that out to the team here, but I guess, just in closing, I guess, what would you do differently and why should we continue to do business with your firm?
So, one thing that my other towns do that you don't do here is use the town manager as a clearinghouse. So, in other words, let's say the five of you have five different views. Rather than five questions coming to us with five different perspectives wanting to accomplish five different things, they should go to the town manager. The town manager is in the best position to sort out all these different questions and put them together in a way that gets to what you, what's the common denominator? What's the will of the majority, for example? So, let's say four of you want to do X, go in the X direction, and one of you wants to go in the opposite direction. Should we then listen to the four and go in one direction because we're being told that and leave one without guidance? Or...
That's the point, right? I guess we don't want you to go with a majority. We want the facts, I guess. We want the truth. And so, I think that there's going to be several scenarios where that comes up again in the future. So, are you saying that you would work with the town manager and see what majority's going?
Yes, we are hoping that you would empower the town manager to have a system like we have in other towns. We call it a request for legal services. So, if, let's say there's a board of five who are disagreeing over something, each person writes down requests for legal services. What do they request? When do they request it? What's the deadline? Give it to the town manager, and then he, like, adds them up, averages the amount. So, if somebody needs it on Monday, somebody needs it on Friday, somebody wants it on Wednesday, we get, we get some real guidance as opposed for our trying to figure out, how is it that five people can have so different a view of the same issue? But it's happened numerous times, and it's not a question of counting noses. It's a question of what are the facts? And it's not a question of counting noses, it's a question of what are the facts? The law depends on the facts. And if the facts are different, we need to know. If there's a lease, give us the lease. If there's other information beyond what's been given to us, give us that supplemental information. And the way other towns do is that's part of what the town manager does routinely. So that we essentially stay in constant communication with the town manager. He tells us what's coming. He looks at all these different requests and says, here's what they really want, or here's what they're, what they're going to have to decide, sorts it out, tells us, give us an opinion on this issue. Then we can do our job. But so much of what we get is amorphous, contradictory, in disagreement, different We don't feel that it should be our job to figure out what you all want. It's really up to you, take a vote or let the town manager manage it. Any one of those things would be a great improvement, would have made the last year go so much better. But things have seemed to have quieted down. And so right now, we're getting requests that are unitary and easier to understand. So I think that's why you're seeing an improvement.
And then, any closing remarks? Do you have another question?
Yeah, if you don't mind. I have to point out, first, a procedural question. In our policies and procedures, we're supposed to send out a questionnaire to the employees, the department heads to see, basically, when we do a review of town council, to get their feedback. Was that done?
No, not to me.
I'm asking the chair.
I don't believe so right now.
Okay. The other thing is, I have to say, Mr. Durensis, I appreciate your comments about getting different questions from different people. But in our policies, it's very clear, if I ask you for a legal opinion, I see the chair and I see the town manager. It's for that very specific reason that the town manager sees it. And then if Selectmen Burrows sends a similar request, it goes to the chair again, that's another person to get eyes on it, and it goes to the town manager again. You know, that's the way it was set up in the beginning. That's the way it was when we did the contract with you. In fact, it was your request for us to even put the policy in the very contract that states how that works and who has access to you. So that was all a known entity on the front end when we did the contract, the retainer.
But I expected some feedback. In other words, you have a request, you give it to various people, there's no feedback. In other words, if you give me a request and somebody else has a different view on that request, we get nothing. But then when we answer your request, then we get, oh, no, you're wrong because. So there have been times that we've had to write four or five different opinions on the same subject because all this information starts coming in later. We were envisioning a process that people get informed of things and they put their input in to us at that time, before we issue our first decision. So we have a full deck of cards.
Well, I just wanted to make the point clear that although you'd like it to work one way, that's not the process that we have in town. That's not the process that you agreed to in the retainer because when we brought up that whole policy, you asked to have it inserted in the retainer, and it was. And I understand that, yeah, you may get different questions from different members that may lead to a different conclusion. And if the members are all following the processes of notifying the chair and notifying the town manager, you could reach out to the town manager and say, I got these two different opinions. What are we doing? I just wanted to be clear that, you know, the town council and the town manager both work for the select board. And, you know, we're always willing to make, try to make things better and easier. But the way you laid out, the way things were happening, is not consistent with the policy of the board and the retainer that you asked for that policy to be inserted into. So, thank you. Oh, one final question. Based on the comments that you've heard, I guess I have one question, and you've made some adjustments to, you know, bringing in other attorneys. Now that you have a good sense for Billerica and how much is going on in here and the dynamic of the board and, you know, three new town managers and all of that, and I know you're here interviewing, do you truly feel like you have the bandwidth to handle Billerica amongst all the other seven towns that you represent? Thank you. Thank you.
Do you have any closing remarks?
Let's just take a look at my notes to see if I covered everything. I want to emphasize that we're quite willing to meet with the board and put together some changes, either in the financial terms or in the policies and procedures. And as I indicated, the towns may not pretty well under the retainer. We provide a documentation of that. And we're willing to keep going on that retainer basis. And the belief that we've learned a lot, and we've learned it the hard way. The town turned out to be harder than we thought, but in part, it was because there were all these upheavals going on in the town. There were all these upheavals going on. But things seem to have quieted down. So we're willing to work with the town. We care about the town. And as I say, we hired this guy who's 27 years a resident of the town. And what he does when you contact him is not only address the contact and its handling, but he provides background and information. He knows if it mentions a street, he knows the street, he knows the conditions, he knows all these details, and he provides that constant background to us. So we have, we've made an investment in this. And we think we've learned. So some of the criticism that we've just heard really goes back to a year ago. But throughout the last year, we've learned, we've worked to address it, we've made, we've gotten a number of satisfied comments back. And we do welcome your, talking to some of your department heads that we have worked with, get some feedback from them. And give us an opportunity to fix, because you can always change council at any time. But give us an opportunity to fix things. So if a request got lost and the member who made the request never saw the report, we think we have a fix for it. So let us try and fix the problems, see if we can make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have new business quick items. Number 10, discussion on upcoming veterans events requested by Donnie Jarvis.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So before we get to a crazy year for the office, it's usually Memorial Day and Veterans Day are the busiest times. But with the holidays, we add a lot more to the office to really support our veterans during the holiday season. However, we've added a lot more this year than I did the previous years. To make all this successful, I created a volunteer team that we call the Honor Platoon, which has been fun. We meet every Monday. And we are both veterans and members of the community at large, right? Bringing them all together, multiple ideas, multiple strengths and weaknesses, till we work collaboratively to create these great successes for our veterans. And one of the big initiatives I pushed for was to create an annual Veterans Day event that will happen in November. I have chosen to not put it on Veterans Day particularly because that day changes on what day of the week it's going to be every year, right? So given that this year it's on a Tuesday, next year it'll be a Wednesday, not everybody has that day off to honor our vets. And it's tough to nail down weekdays to get resources available. With that, I have chosen to pick the first Sunday of each November where we, as a community, will step aside to honor our veterans. Before we get to that, I'll start what we're doing in October, and I'll go in order. I know you have one of the documents that we just mailed out, which highlights three big events. Yes, that was actually put on a four-by-six postcard, and 2,000 of them are being mailed out, one to each veteran here in Billerica. We know the first batch has been received because this phone has been ringing all day, which is what I want. If my office phone is not ringing, you should fire me immediately, which is good, that the phone ringing. But there are a few things that aren't on there that came up last minute that we've added that are much smaller. So this year, on October 13th, it is Columbus Day. The United States Navy turns 250th. That won't be on the handout, so we just added it. The VFW in Pinehurst helped the 250th for the Marine Corps and the Army back in August. They wanted to do the same thing for the Navy. So we're doing another pig roast event there on Monday, October 13th. It's the actual birthday for the Navy, but it's also Columbus Day, so we should be available. I have an 80-pound pig ordered that I do all the, my own pig roasting, which is why we do so many. So I'll be roasting a pig on that day. So what is on your handout is October, Saturday, October 25th, we are doing the first Resource Fair that I've hosted here in Billerica. There are multiple reasons why we're hosting this. There are a lot of different veteran resources that are available here in the Commonwealth, nonprofits statewide and federal as well. I felt that putting this together as hopefully an annual event would allow veterans from the community in and from out to come to Billerica to learn about what's available to them, both through nonprofits state and federal. I've also worked with, working with a few local businesses to help make this successful. So what is unique for us and that I've kind of fought for was that we will be offering free haircuts to veterans here onsite in town hall. Yes, females and males will get haircuts in styles. We have two local businesses so far that have stepped up that will be here onsite to offer these haircuts. To me, it was always a big thing in the military, they get your haircut certain way, certain style, blah, blah, blah. So let's add that into here. And then another one is the 99s down on Boston Road will be providing lunch for all the veterans that are attending. In additional, since I've been here, and I've been, I was hired in August 2022, Ocean State Job Lot was one of the biggest sponsors and supporters that I brought into my office. And we will be receiving momentarily, within a few weeks, 500 brand-new winter coats, which is something that we've always been doing. And they are gone from October to December, we give it to the last one. So we will start that distribution at the Resource Fair on October 25th. Less than a week later is going to be the, what we're calling the Veteran Honor Stroll. What we're doing is we're taking over Vietnam Veterans Park. Initially, the talk was doing a Veterans Day parade. The Honor Platoon, we pitched a lot of different ideas, and the best idea was to take over Vietnam Veterans Park. And I was there before I came here tonight. We're going to use the soccer fields in the back to do most of the activities that we're hosting. The field when you first pull in will be more for reflection. We'll do a ceremony in the beginning, and then we'll work on having different things up there for families and veterans to reflect and honor our veterans who may not be present with us. Down on the soccer fields, we're going to have a cornhole tournament. The boys scouts are going to do, it's called Bat and Trap. It's an old Revolutionary War-era event that will be there. We'll have different vendors set up. We'll have some food options available. We are working on still other activities that we'll do. One of them will be cookie decorating of some sort, is being, that's being worked out right now. We're going to have an area where you can make thank you cards. We'll have another area where you can make knickknacks to give the vets. Kind of a good opportunity to just thank our veterans, come together, and find unique ways to show our appreciation and gratitude. That will be November 2nd of this year. A week or two later, we go into Thanksgiving, and that's not on there because we only have 100. Every year since I've started, I have provided through donors, 100 turkeys with fresh vegetables for Thanksgiving. That will be available on the Monday with the week of Thanksgiving. I don't recall the date off my head. But that Monday, we'll set up the auditorium to do a distribution. I get 100 frozen turkeys and I get fresh garden vegetables to give away to our veterans here. We offer it to the veterans, as they call the office, between now and then. So that'll be the Monday with the week of Thanksgiving. Following that, we then go into December, which is the Christmas party. When I started this office in that 2022, there was nothing going on in the fall or the holiday season for vets. So I, for the last 15 years, have been doing meal events at large scales. I have a problem with stuffing rooms. We've happened here. So I started the holiday party in December 2022. We had 160 registered. I had my volunteers seat the room for 200. We stalled by 45 minutes because 260 showed up. That's a beautiful problem to have. We now seat the room for 300 at its capacity, and we fill the room, which is a good problem to have. This year, we're going to expand on this. I am fully aware that not all of our veterans can attend this event for multiple reasons. Rather, they are homebound for, you know, health reasons, they may be feeling sick, they might have a situation come up, whatever it may be, they cannot physically be in the room. So we're going to add delivery. If you cannot attend, I'm going to deliver you a meal. I did this during COVID a lot. And my smallest meal delivery was 300, my biggest was 700, cooked, packaged, delivered. This is not the first time I've done a sit-down in meal delivery at the same event. I used to live in a city called Newburyport, and I ran the Newburyport Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day, and I would put out 800 meals. We're using the same thing here in Billerica. To make the Christmas, the holiday party even better, a few years ago, we added Christmas stocking collections from the town. And we have gathered hundreds each year. The collection, we'll start collecting them November 1st. I already have the flyers slowly going out. We are going to have multiple collection sites here in town because my office is small now. We usually fill the office as a good part of this, but it's just not safe anymore to continue doing that. Veterans come in in walkers and wheelchairs. I love seeing the stockings, but it's just not safe. So we have a few location sites throughout the town that we're going to be working with to collect these stockings. There is no limit, right? It's not going to be a magical number, I stop. We're literally going to collect them until December 16th, the day of our party. So they'll be going out both in person at the Elks, they'll also be delivered with every meal that we deliver. We're also coordinating with They may not get a meal depending on restrictions that they may have. Some of them may have swallowing issues, they can't eat certain foods. That's okay. We still want to give them a stocking from the town of Barrika. Beyond that, any leftover stockings will be then given to the Bedford VA for the veterans that reside there. So, it's a lot. We're going to be busy. My phone will be ringing nonstop, which is what I love, but I want, I really wanted to come here and just share with you what we have going on for our vets. I've already given the Honor Platoon their next assignment after the holidays, and they told me to get through December 1st, but I'm excited about this. I feel, I've always felt that the word "team" stands for "together, everybody achieves more," and this is something that I wanted to create in Barrika when I first started, was the Honor Platoon. You'll see I have a few agenda items here, but what I wanted to show you before I have up too much time is the lawn sign for the, the Honor Platoon will be very simple in nature, but these may not be the ones we place because I'm going to be removing the date and saying "first Sunday of November." This way, we're not buying new signs every year. So, it will look like this, it may or may not have the date on it. So, any questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment. Thank you, Donnie. This is absolutely incredible, all of these events. So, thank you to the Honor Platoon. This is just an amazing way to honor those that have served and especially those who certainly need it. So, this is, you know, really just incredible, these, these events that you do, and we sincerely appreciate it. We'll do everything we can to help you promote the events as well, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Have a great day, everybody. Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to approve four 18-by-24 signs for, reads Across America from November 17th. Oh, yeah. I know. I apologize for that. And I, I skipped an agenda item. So, Signs on the Common request, four-by-18, 18-by, four 18-by-24 signs for the Barrika Honor Platoon, Veterans Honor Stroll on November 2nd, 2025, from October 13th to November 2nd, requested by Veterans Agent Donnie Jarvis. I make a motion to approve the sign request.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And our next sign request, I make a motion to approve four 18-by-24 signs for Read Across America from November 17th to December 5th, requested by Veterans Agent Donnie Jarvis.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have Signs on the Common, request for 18-by-24 signs for the North Barrika Baptist Church Annual Craft Fair on Sunday, October 18, 2025, from October 12th to October 18th, requested by Diana Fowler.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know if she was here to speak on that, but. Next on our agenda, we have Use of Common, request use of the Town Common on Saturday, October 18, 2025, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for a gospel music rally requested by Esther Luwuga from Global Evangelical Church, 34 Leno Circle.
Thank you for having us on the agenda tonight. My name is Esther Luwuga, and here with me and also online are members from the Global Evangelical Church, which is located at 34 Leno Circle. We are proud members of the Belerica community since 2020, and we are here today to request the use of the Bellarica Common on October 18th. But before I go further, I want to acknowledge that we are under the leadership of the Reverend John Becker Kattende, and he's also a resident of the Belerica community. So, we are requesting your approval to use the Common on the 18th to do a gospel rally for Jesus. We want to increase our, our presence in the community. We want to be involved in the community. We've been in the community, but we just found out when we came to inquire at the town that we are not really known, but we have a lot to offer. Our congregation has young, from all the way from the young to the old, and we have different departments, and we feel like each department can bring something with, you know, to the community of Belerica, but we want to increase our presence by being out there, putting out a music rally, and getting the community to know us, and also inviting them to have a good time. That's our petition tonight.
Questions from the board?
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the request for the use of the Common on Saturday, October 18, 2025, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for a gospel music rally requested by Esther Luwuga from the Global Evangelical Church, 34 Leno Circle.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I, can I also request that we send this to the police department just in case? If people are going to be crossing a lot, it might be helpful to have a officer there. I mean, the chief's here, but.
I already did. So, Sergeant McKenna got back to me. He said that the department is aware of the event. There are some potential logistic issues that are being ironed out. Lieutenant Commander John Herring will be the point of contact for the group's request and communication from the town.
Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next on our agenda, we have Signs on the Common, request for four 18-by-24 signs for the BATV Annual Haunted House from October 11th to October 25th, requested by Faith Burdy. Make a motion to approve four 18-by-24 signs for BATV's Annual Haunted House from October 11th through October 25th.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have discussion on the resolution in support of paint stewardship legislation requested by Thomas Irwin.
Thomas here? Is Thomas online?
Thomas, if you're online, if you could raise your hand so we know which participant is you.
Am I yelling?
All right. Awesome.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have appointments. Local Cultural Council, Angela, sorry if I, Angela Lagudischi, expiration June 30, 2027. Make a motion to appoint Angela Lagudischi to the Local Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Madam Chair, I have a question on the previous agenda item.
Sure.
Discussion on the resolution in support of the paint. Does the proponent need to be here for us to discuss this?
I had several questions for him, just in terms of disposal, like in terms of where, like, funding would come from and things like that, so I don't know if we're able to get those answers.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to make.
Also, if I may, while we're on that, since we're not going to take that up tonight, it probably would be beneficial for us to send that, because if you looked at the whole proposal that was sent in, there were some pros and cons sections in the back, and the, some of the distributors in Barrika that are small businesses, it'd probably be helpful for them to weigh in and let us know what they think of it, because they're the ones that need to take in that $1.25 fee and then manage the paint, and I know it's on a volunteer basis, but I think we should get some impact from the businesses that are going to be impacted by it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have Old Business Town Managers Report.
Dylan, take it away.
Yes, thank you. If I may, just take a second. One thing I did want to say before getting into the Town Managers' Report was I just wanted to thank the Yankee Doodle Committee and all of the volunteers that made this past weekend happen. It was my first time attending, and I have to say something that as you were walking down the street and just seeing everybody, it, I love events that pull the community together, and I appreciate everything that they did and everybody that was involved because I also understand that it takes a small army to make those things happen. So, just wanted to put that out there. Included in your packet is the Town Managers' Report. This report, I basically kind of focused on some of the questions that were asked at a previous meeting, which I do apologize that I didn't have the answers at the previous meeting. Unfortunately, Kelly and Fred couldn't attend this evening, but if there's additional questions, they, they are willing to come to the October 6th meeting, which I believe is the next scheduled meeting. A couple of things I did want to touch base with prior to getting into the question and answers was, as the board is aware, free cash was certified this past week. One thing I did want to ensure is that everybody ended up receiving on the distribution list, the thing from the state that kind of had that information. I do know that I didn't initially receive that when everybody didn't appreciate the fact that people worked to get me added to the list, but if you didn't get it, we can make sure that you get added to the list. But essentially, we had $5,362,862 in free cash. We also certified water retain earnings at $1,642,414, and sewer wastewater at $3,502,299. I want to thank Amit for all of his work on this and making that happen, and staff as well. The other thing is there's information in the memo regarding planning and economic development. A few things I do want to point out, I received this information from the Community Development and Planning Director, in which case she kind of provided some bullet points there that I just want to touch base on, is that the grant application for the Route 3 Corridor Study should be announced in the next few weeks. If awarded, this grant would pay for a consultant to further study the Route 3 Corridor Study and to see what other actions may be necessary to attract development at key locations. Also, Business in Focus Magazine has published a feature on Barrika highlighting the commercial on Capital Facilities Project done in town over the past 10 years. From my understanding, there was an article that was done about 10 years ago, and they reached out this past summer to do a follow-up, just kind of on, at that time, they were talking about the high school and different projects that have been completed, and then also some of the goals, and it was interesting, interesting sitting in that discussion on how much Barrika has accomplished in the past 10 years, and I think that's something that the community should be proud of. Also, there's a Small Business Administration is working with staff to host an educational event to attract more manufacturing jobs. Event will include information like how to access capital and technical assistance. There's a tentative date right now of November 18th, but that's still in the early stages. And then also, a global company in town is growing, outgrowing their space, and they're conducting a stay or go assessment, and they're potentially considering leaving Barrika. If they stay, the expansion will create 200 additional jobs. Additional discussion at future board meetings is something that we're planning on and having to see if we might be able to entice them to stay. Beyond that, the second page of the Managers' Report includes various questions that I was unable to answer at a previous meeting, having a lot to do with kind of the Complete Streets policy, townwide sidewalk inventory and maintenance plan, paving plan, and budget. Obviously, there, some of the questions, I'll go ahead and go down some of them. Has the town conducted the required annual review of the Complete Streets policy since its adoption in 2017? One thing is that there have not been annual reviews, but changes are not needed at this time. The policy is still valid, and we are still in compliance with the Complete Streets program. They are suggesting modifying the language in the policy to state modification, essentially when needed as opposed to annually. Has the town completed a townwide sidewalk inventory and maintenance plan as specifically required by the policy? In 2020, the town developed a sidewalk inventory and assessment PDF and a curb ramp inventory and assessment, which I believe electronically, if you click on those, it will actually take you to the documents. Are Complete Streets principles being consistently applied to roadway management? If so, how is compliance with Complete Streets policy documented in current and upcoming infrastructure plans and projects? Yes, our annual paving program and other town roadway projects comply with the town's Complete Streets policy. I can go through all of these, but I guess, you know, obviously, you guys are able to read it. I, I guess my thing at this point in time is staff has been working on some of these things. There are some things that we also need to kind of focus on, but I can have Kelly and Fred here, October 6th, if, if the board would like for them to come forward, and I guess I'm seeking guidance from the board on that.
Yeah, I think that would, that would be helpful, so we can have some questions directly. If they could come on the 6th, that'd be great.
I will plan on that, then.
Madam Chair? Thank you. These were the questions that I had submitted a few weeks back. I appreciate the follow-up. I, I'm glad to see some of it's being done. A little disappointed that some of it hasn't been being done, but we've caught it, so now we can correct it. I definitely would like to have that conversation with Kelly and Fred because a few of the answers to the questions I found to be non-responsive, so I'm definitely going to have additional questions for them to just kind of clarify it in my mind and have a better understanding of how this works.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the updates, Chris.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a quick question? On the global company that's deciding whether they're going to stay or go, we obviously want to do everything we can to keep them.
Absolutely.
So, I don't know, you know, you said you were going to bring it to the board, but, you know, we've taken some actions already. I don't know if that's helped implement things. I don't know if a TIF or anything else would help, but not only do we want to keep them here, but if they're also going to grow an extra 200 additional jobs, that's a lot of expansion, and a lot of space that they could take up. So, is there anything that we can do to assist that going in the right direction, which is them staying?
I think, one thing I will say is that the planning director, and actually, Mark down stairs, yeah, he, both of them have been meeting with various businesses in town, businesses that may want to come to town. They're doing an amazing job. I can't emphasize that enough. When I have more, I will definitely bring that back before the board, but they're doing everything they possibly can to make sure that we continue thriving and maintaining the businesses that we have, and then also attracting additional businesses.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Next, on our generate a discussion and possible vote designed for the police station.
So, if I may, included in your packet is a memo from myself. You may recall that there was discussion at the August 11th Select Board Meeting regarding the police station. At that point in time, the chief did a great job of presenting that information regarding their current conditions and needs for their police department. During that presentation, this was after we had done a feasibility study on the department. Ultimately, what that feasibility study determined was that the current facility could maintain the department, but needed renovations, and it needs renovations both for the growth of the department, and then also because of current conditions. I believe that he had some photos as part of that presentation that demonstrated the rot on some of the window frames. I think he mentioned, and he can speak to the conditions of the police department better than I, but that some windows won't open, some windows won't close. There's not adequate space for the female officers in their locker room, and there were a lot of other adjustments that needed to happen, and they were, they've done an amazing job on kind of, in my terms, jerry-rigging the department to make it work.
Doing the best they can with what they have.
Exactly. And, and so, to that, there were a couple of different options. One was, I believe, a $5.6 million renovation, and then there was an $11 million renovation. The $11 million renovation obviously is more intense, and kind of going to renovate more things and address more of their needs. With that being said, the question was asked of me during that discussion, whether our debt stabilization could handle the renovations for the police department. What I've put in here, and then working with the police department themselves, is what I believe to be a sound plan in that, the last slide of that presentation in August kind of had a schedule of what they'd be looking at if we were to move forward. With that being said, that schedule, any renovations to the department would not be occurring until after spring meeting anyways. It would happen sometime late summer. So, at this point, instead of moving forward with the $11 million figure, which is based off of the feasibility study, and not necessarily off of any schematics or designs, would be to move forward with just that, the design piece of the project, so that we can get those schematics, so that we can get better concrete numbers, so that we're not necessarily moving forward with the project, and then either coming back later saying we need more money, or that it wasn't the right number. And, so at this point, what I'm recommending is, instead of moving forward with an $11 million project, would be to do $640,000 for the design piece of that project, so that we can keep the ball moving forward, but at the same time, get more additional information. Simultaneously, there are some other things in the debt schedule having to do with sewer that we're also evaluating to see if potentially, when I, as, I also didn't feel that it was necessarily my place as acting town manager, although currently, right now, I'm still the acting town manager. Hopefully, that changes later today.
Technically.
But at that point, I feel a little more confident in providing a little bit of a recommendation or guidance, and I feel like there's some other things that, when I look at prioritizing things, that we might be able to move around to make something work, but this would be the first step in that, so.
Appreciate the clarification and transparency there. So, just a final clarification here. So, tonight, in terms of what we would be voting on, is really just to move this to town meeting in terms of the design phase only.
So, for the next item on the agenda, I believe, to discuss the warrants, it's also included in there, but that, that is what I would be seeking, is support for moving forward with the design aspect.
Yeah, one quick question. Yeah, I fully support that. The question is, is the 640, the design aspect of the 5-point-whatever-million-dollar project, or the $11 million project, are they going to look at the whole thing and?
They will be look-
Like a new number, basically.
Well, I will say that yes. The feasibility study was kind of looking at their current operations, their current, and then also what the anticipated growth with some of their goals and everything. This is actually looking at, okay, instead of doing, the feasibility study provided more of a conceptual outlay, I guess, this is going to get into their operations, how it can actually be done, how systematically, you know, are they going to run and do certain, like, wires and some of that, so that we have the true costs of what the project will be.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
I, I 100% agree with this approach, and I actually appreciate you bringing this to us, instead of trying to move forward with the $11 million. I'm sure town meeting will appreciate that, too. So, I just wanted to thank you for thinking outside the box and bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. Actually, I have to comment that, working with the police department, they've been wonderful on this, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm just a little disappointed to see that we're not, there's not a willingness to just push this forward. It's a need of the community. We're already not going forward with even more expensive, full-new police station. We're going down a more cost-effective approach. It was my interpretation that the prior money spent on the feasibility study was made, to be, to be made for the full funding. That's what, that that would be, what the decision would be based off of, not piecemealing it more. I mean, it's better than nothing. It's going forward with spending $640,000 in free cash to start the design process, but I mean, this is a need of the community. If we want growth, if we want to support our police department, there's clear needs. Chief Farah showed me around, and she'll be firsthand what they're dealing with, with the current facility, and what they need to be changed. So, I wouldn't want this to delay it, and I just feel like it inevitably just will delay it. So, I'd be supportive. I mean, we can, I think we can afford it with our financial situation. We were anticipating to take on other debt that we, the town as a whole, prior boards, prior town meetings. We were already anticipating to take on some additional debt that we haven't, and this is much smaller than it. So, I would be supportive in trying to get this done as soon as possible.
So, just a comment, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dillon, that this is essentially, it's not necessarily stalling it, some of this design phase, these steps would have to be taken anyway to get a more accurate cost, and then, once we have that accurate cost, I think in terms of a easier pill to swallow, as you mentioned, too, just in terms of getting it through town meeting, to kind of, this phase has to happen anyway, and then, so to approve a design phase to give a more accurate cost, that, you know, rather than the $11 million, and people have sticker shock, or something like that, and completely voted down, and it wouldn't be able to move forward at all, I think it's more so to get a more accurate cost that very well could be 9.5 instead of the 11, and then be able to move it forward. So, in my opinion, I don't think it's necessarily stalling it, it's actually helping it move forward.
The agenda says discussion and possible vote. Are we just going to do that now, or?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the design study presented in the memo from the town manager, Chris Dillon, to fund the feasibility study in the amount of $640,000 from free cash.
Oh, if I may, it shouldn't be feasibility study.
Sorry, I thought I said design study. So, I amended to say design study for $640,000 from free cash.
Thank you.
I'll second it. I mean, I guess that'll carry over to the warrant article when we get to it, so yeah, second.
Okay, motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have preliminary warrant, discussion and possible vote, October town meeting.
Madam Chair, I think I have a question for Dawn.
Sure.
I usually use my electronic document, so I'm a little bit confused on a couple of the things in the packet here, and so this is, vote to amend the zoning bylaw table, but that's also in this that you gave us, so I'm not sure which one we're using.
That one is actually updated in the draft.
Side of here, so I don't need to look at this one. Thank you.
I think, I think we go, right, line by line?
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, nope. I just wanted to make sure that I followed the expectations. Article 1 is to appoint one member to the Bowers Fund Committee. The committee was established in the late 1800s. The Bowers sisters left Bill Rikka approximately $11,000 with the intent of assisting the poor in Bill Rikka. The current expendable balance is $7,573.07, with a principal balance of $161,285.59. What the article is, next slide, please, is to see if the town will vote to appoint one member to the Bowers Fund Committee. This appointment is for a five-year term, and then there is information in there, as well as that Ms. O'Rourke's term is expiring in October.
O'Rourke, yep.
I'm not, I'm not trying to make the procedure difficult, but this part of our meeting is going to be pretty long and extensive, and we have members in the audience that are here to present information to us. Is it possible to maybe move that up before we get into the warrant?
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine. Great suggestion. Okay, so we're going to-
Table.
Table this, and then come down to number 21, Danielle.
21.
Right?
21, yep. Thank you, I appreciate the accommodation.
I'm sure, I'm sure they appreciate that, too. I'm going to go, just going to call out number 21 here.
Oh.
Yep.
I see.
Kind of skip down to 21, then come back to 20.
I see. Item 21, discussion and possible vote to award the RFP for town-owned farmland.
Is there anyone? Yep, come on up.
Madam Chair, are we in, like, going to do a brief interview, or what's the?
Yeah, I think just to kind of get a brief explanation of what the idea would be with the use of the land, for those that-
So, should we do one applicant at a time?
Yeah, I would do one applicant at a time.
Could I just, we spoke outside, I'm sorry, it is on, I'm, is, I think it's on. So, we spoke outside, and-
Could you just not introduce yourself? Press on it?
Yeah, just introduce yourself, just for the audience that may not know what's going on. Karen Kaminsky, and I have the proposal in for the land. So, Margaret was looking at the proposal on her phone, and she turned, she said, "This is you?" I said, "Yes." And she, so we went outside and spoke, and then we brought Mr. Griggs outside, and what we'd all like to do is if we could come back to this with the board, because I think we can come to agreement with the farm itself, incorporating the bigger plan of my proposal that we have. We just need some time to talk it out more.
Like to table it?
Table it, and then so that we can have a discussion, because he knows that his farm has to be left to someone, and the bigger plan here is to incorporate the big, I don't know, have you read the, my proposal?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, and that's what, so he's willing to work with me.
Okay, so it sounds like you need to, there are lots of angles here.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, to shelf it for, like, I don't know how this would work with you all.
So, I have a technical question. How does that impact the RFP? Are we under a deadline to make a decision? No?
I'm, oh, deadline to make a decision, okay.
Well, we already have the applicants for the RFP, so I just didn't, so you, you two are the two applicants, so it's your applicant and the farm, Griggs Farm, are the applicants. So, I just wanted to make sure that if we decide to bring this back in, say, maybe two weeks, if, if that's-
Yeah, it should be fine, in two weeks, if not within this, within a week.
I don't think our next meeting isn't until October 6th, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't outside of any legal parameters-
Would this, let me ask you a question. Would this open this up for someone else to come in to bid on that land?
No, it's closed.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that, that stays that way, because there's a bigger picture here, right, as you saw in the proposal. It's a huge educational component for the whole town, and feeding and everything, really uniting the town.
Okay.
And getting the farm back to itself. Well, better than-
Yes.
Yeah, restoring it even more, and leaving a legacy for this man.
Yes.
Right?
Basically, we want to walk the land, discuss it.
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent.
Is that good?
Yeah, we can, we can table that.
Especially on today.
Yes.
We don't need to table, we'll just put it off to an agenda.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll, we'll reschedule it for, up to the chair.
Okay.
October 6th.
October 6th, right?
October 6th.
Yep.
Yep.
Is the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay, and so, we'll just present the big plan at that point, or is it just your, is it just on, it's just, yeah, okay, I'm just-
If I, if I may?
The town meeting is, right, town meeting is-
I mean, it's the next night, October 7th.
That's the 7th.
Next night, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just looking for my notes.
No, I was just going to say, you know, we could put it on the agenda for the 6th, but if you guys aren't ready, if you could just let Dawn in our office know, and we'll just push it to the next meeting. So, you know, with this, yeah, that would be the 28th.
20th.
20th, yeah. Be October 20th, so.
The next, we'll do it.
But-
It'll be done, it'll be done by the 6th.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Great.
It has to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, back to number 20, preliminary warrant discussion and possible vote, October town meeting.
Great, what's the, what's the picture of?
It's a picture of the farm.
Billy, did you want to show everybody the picture of your farm?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
Basically, Billy, all the town, this is basically the town line here.
Okay.
Right there, town.
We'll curious it.
All picture buildings are not the same.
What year was that pictured, do you know?
It was an aerial photography. My father dealt with a photographer, so that's-
He said it was the 80s.
The U of D before. The greenhouses, where they are, tell me, 1984 or 85.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent.
Three years ago.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
Good night.
All right, let's keep this, get this show on the road here. All right, we're back to, um-
Back to item 20, preliminary warrant, discussion and possible vote, October town meeting.
So, just curious, like, in the past, are we able to just even go through, like, instead of like explaining everyone if there's any, like, questions or discussion around each one, or do you typically go through?
So, the one, if I may, so typically, when we go, like, this first one, the Bowers Fund, we could make a motion to recommend that now, as it is, because it's not going to change.
Yep.
And then we're done with it. Some of the others, there may be some that Mr. Dillon will say is not ready for, if they have contracts that they're still working on, and we'll just push those off. So, that would be the easiest way to do it.
Make a motion to approve, to recommend Article 1.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 2 is to hear reports of town departments, committees, and officers.
Make a motion to approve Article 2, second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 3, that said, withdrawn. Article 4 is to vote the sum of money from free cash and retained earnings to-
Chris, can I check it, Mike? Nope. Take it.
Nope, thank you. Article 4 is to vote a sum of money from free cash and retained earnings to the debt stabilization fund. This is $1.8 million.
Question on that. What is the, it's 1.8 in total, but from the general fund, free cash and retained, and retained earnings, to the debt stabilization, what's the split up on that? How much is free cash?
I don't actually know that retained earnings should be there. It should be 1.8 from free cash.
That's my thought, but-
Which, that's on me.
So, it'd be striking the retained earnings.
And retained earnings.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what was the change? I couldn't hear that.
It's just the removing and retained earnings. This is coming from free cash.
Oh, from free cash, there's no retained earnings.
The 1.8 is strictly free cash, no retained earnings, okay, thank you.
Yeah. When we first drafted the preliminary warrant, we did everything very broad and open, and that's just one I hadn't narrowed yet.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve, to recommend Article 4.
Second.
Motion and second.
As amended?
Yeah, as amended.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article 5 is to transfer and appropriate a sum of money from the town debt stabilization fund to fund the debt service. We're looking to make the $1,350,000 payment.
Make a motion to recommend Article 5.
Well, is that the actual number that it's going to be?
Yes.
So, it'll be not the 6 million that's printed, it's 1 million what?
It's 1,350, uh, 350,000.
Yep. Thank you.
Sure.
A second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Article 6, to vote from free cash to the land bank account, to see if- Article Six, to vote from free cash to the land bank account, to see if the town will raise and appropriate, actually, it's to transfer from the free cash, some of fifty thousand dollars to the land bank account.
Fifty thousand?
Yes.
So this was generated from the land bank policy that the board had approved, and the year one is supposed to be five hundred thousand.
I did not see the five hundred thousand from the policy. The one thing that I will say is that what is, when you go through all of these articles, there is not every bit of the five point three million dollars is from free cash is looking to be expended. I think that we have the ability to potentially do an additional contribution in the spring, but there's still a lot of unknowns with collective bargaining agreements and some of the other expenses. So obviously, we wanted to make a contribution to the land bank.
Yeah.
But at this point, we didn't know.
So what I would say is, I got the land bank policy here, which was unanimously supported by the select board and worked through with the former town manager, Mr. Maine, and it says year one, well, I'll just read the whole thing. This directive establishes a dedicated funding mechanism for the land bank account, ensuring that the town of Boroka has financial resources readily available to acquire and preserve property as opportunities arise. Year one, in the first year, the town shall allocate five hundred thousand dollars to the land bank account from any available fund sources, with a primary focus of, on free cash and over a surplus, or all proceeds from any land sales or municipal land, of municipal land. And then it goes on to talk about ongoing years, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, with a two percent escalation, and, and so on.
I, I will say that I fully support having the land bank account. There was a situation in our previous community where we had an opportunity to purchase some land for reasonably, a reasonably priced amount, and we just didn't have the money to do it. And I think that when you have an account like this, it helps in that situation.
Yep.
My concern currently is just the fact that if everything were to go through as presented in this booklet, the warrant, right now, we are looking at roughly a million dollars in free cash. And I know that there is some things that we're gonna end up needing to do in the spring, and I just don't want to necessarily, if we do five hundred thousand dollars towards this account, I don't know that we will have enough free cash to potentially take care of some of those other expenses. I recognize if we have it, I would fully support doing the additional amount in the spring. I just don't want to necessarily cut our legs out from under us.
I mean, I, we typically do the spend, the majority of the free cash spending in the fall. So what do you foresee trying, you said we were spending about a million dollars in this warrant of free cash, and we have five hundred, five million three hundred thousand and change.
No, there's gonna be a million left.
Okay. So we would only need another four hundred fifty thousand to fund the policy that was adopted. If you're already recommending fifty thousand, which leaves you a half a million, or five hundred fifty thousand.
I, I know that there are, our electric bill, we're, we're gonna end up needing free cash to cover some electric expenses. There are some other expenses that I don't know where we're going to fall. And so ultimately, I just don't want to make the commitment here and then find out we need to do other things in the spring. So that, that's just my recommendation, I mean.
So what I would ask is, since the board adopted this funding policy unanimously, and at the time, Mr. Maine said, you know, it wouldn't be a problem, why don't we keep it at five hundred thousand dollars? Because you can always go down, but you can't go up, which is why it's plugged in at six hundred thousand now. And then, you know, fifty thousand is certainly better than nothing, but it's nowhere near the, the directive that was put forward.
I disagree, I think we should vote on it as presented. All the other free cash expenses were made in accordance to, you know, all them as a total, so if we ten X this, that's kind of crazy, when it's kind of like for an arbitrary purpose, that we don't really, so I support it as presented, and I support the town manager's comments.
Well, it's as presented, it's, it's got six hundred thou, six hundred, six million in there, but...
No, five hundred thou, in the updated draft warrant, five hundred, fifty thousand, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair? Just as a broader concern, to some of the comments. Have we gotten the teachers' contracts done yet?
So from my understanding, they've reached a tentative agreement. The school committee's meeting tomorrow. I'm not sure when the full body of the union, or if they've met to vote on it, but the two negotiating parties have reached an agreement. But I should know more after tomorrow night's meeting.
And how much is the electric bill? And where, like, is this a surprise?
Yeah.
Like, is it, was this not budgeted for? I'm, I'm a little bit confused and concerned.
So, um...
What's going on?
Currently, we are anticipating going over what was budgeted for electricity. We received more credits in the past than what we currently have. We don't know, actually, I mean, it's doing a great job of seeking out additional credits, but...
Should we shut the lights off now, just to try to...
If, if I may, um, so our past practice has been, for the past several years, what the town does is, we have a few contracts, right, with some solar arrays, that we generally are saving, you know, an average of sixteen to seventeen percent on, per kilowatt hour. You know, as you've seen in the last three years, rates have gone up, and that's across the board for everybody. And so last year, right in January, when I started, we were, we were looking at a shortfall about three hundred K. And the consultant that we work with, we were able to find large sum of credits at a bigger discount. You know, we bought almost a million dollars in electric credits at twenty percent off from Methuen, and that kind of saved us for fiscal twenty-five. Fiscal twenty-six, you know, we kept the budget for electric pretty level funded. And if you remember, I, I want to say fiscal twenty-four, there was a budget amendment done for the electric bill, the healthcare, and the workers' comp account, and I want to say there was one more line. And so the reason why we're kind of trying to save some of the funding for the springtime is because of that. And I know for electric, we are gonna be looking at a shortfall about three hundred K, that's what we're projecting. You know, if we get sun for the next three months, you know, every day, then we might not. But I can't, I can't promise that, and I can't predict that, you know, we are gonna generate what's kind of allotted to us. And we're trying to find more of these large sums of credit. But the way, I guess, you know, was kind of explained to me is that the region we're in, each block gets a certain amount of generation. And if that generation taps out, and if nobody has those credits, we can't buy them. Like, I can't buy them from Vegas. It has to be in the region, and it has to kind of work with the grid. And so the problem we're having is trying to locate the large sum of credits. So what we're trying to do is, we're looking at potential other solar farms that are out there, that we can sign a contract, but that can't be done tomorrow, right? That, those projects that are kind of building, they might not come on for another year or two, but we are proactively looking for that, so that way we can sign on and kind of get more of these credits in, and kind of come up with a savings of, you know, an app fifteen to eighteen percent, but it's, it's getting harder and harder to do.
And so this three hundred thousand that you're referencing here is inclusive of whatever funding is generated from our own solar farms? Like, are, are we making money off of those to kind of offset our electric bill?
No, so we don't own them, right? So all, what, what happens is, those solar farms generate electric.
Right.
We buy those credits at a seventeen percent discount.
I see, okay.
So, you know, if it's, if it generates a hundred thousand for a month, right, we pay seventeen thousand dollars less than the hundred K. And so we get the hundred K, but we pay, you know, we pay eighty-seven.
And so those are the credits you haven't been able to find right now, which is creating...
Right, the shortfall, right. And are, the, because the electric cost has gone up, you know, to compensate, that's where the delta is. And we're, you know, like I said, we, we were able to do it in, for fiscal twenty-five between several sources, but those opportunities, we're not able to locate right now. And the consultant, he does the same kind of thing for the schools as well. But the school has a benefit, because they own, you know, one of the solar farms, and they get a lot of credits that, you know, which helps them offset their...
I appreciate the clarification. I, for whatever reason, thought that the solar panels over where the old dump were, I thought that was our property. No?
I think it's, if I may, I think it's our property, but...
Yeah.
They, the capping company contracted with a solar company.
Ah, okay.
Utilize that, and we get the credits.
Okay.
For the, for the space.
Okay.
But I guess, if I may, you all, Slocan and Favreau?
Yes, thank you, Slocan Rose, I apologize for interrupting, I just needed to understand what was happening.
So the short term is to bridge that budget deficit with free cash, which is a one-time revenue. I have concern about doing that. I mean, if you said to me, we needed to do it once, and that would be that, and we'd have this other whole solar credit purchasing from someplace else worked out, which it sounds like you're working on, but not there yet, I don't want to put us in a situation like the school department did, using one-time revenues for reoccurring expenses. And unless we have a way of reducing our money, energy use by how much you were gonna use from free cash to pay for it, and/or a guaranteed way, like, the credits are pretty much guaranteed, but the rates went up. I think we really need to rethink that strategy, because I, I'm just, I don't want to see it, we never ever should budget reoccurring expenses with one-time revenues.
I agree with you, we've had this conversation. However, I, I can't control what was budgeted. I think that, I believe in truth in budgeting.
Yep.
And so if I know that an expense is gonna be X, I should be budgeting X. And, and that's, I mean, moving forward, what I would end up doing. But at this point, I'm managing a budget that I didn't necessarily do, and this is a way of kind of covering that delta.
So, so that's just, so that's to fix this once, and then you'd plan on budgeting a more accurate number for the twenty-twenty-seven budget?
Yes.
And that three hundred, it very well, you know, depending on, if we don't get any sunny, it could be four hundred K, right?
Right, right, so, depending on how the use kind of shakes out. But that could be a potential avenue, I mean, I think it's a board policy and discussion that, do we look at more greener options, or buy, you know, kind of having our own solar at some point? Because, and I'm happy to share, you know, the cost of each building, we have it by account. And in, you know, buildings that run kind of all the time, you know, the sewer plant, the water plant...
They're big users.
Right, and, and so that's, that's what kind of destroys, you know, the budget.
So I know this is gonna be a much bigger discussion, but maybe we look to, like the school department that owns some of theirs, putting solar panels on these big sites where we have the water treatment plant and the, you know, I mean, the new DPW building we're building, there's a lot of real estate on the roof.
Yeah.
Well, and I believe that it is being designed so that it could handle solar in the future.
We should make sure of that, because that's, um, so right now, what is the delta that you're worrying? You're, you're gonna try to bridge three hundred thousand?
Three to three fifty, yeah. And if, if I may, you know, we do have, the other portion of it is that we have negotiations with all of our bargaining units, and when we do settle those, those will be retroed. And generally, in the past, we've used free cash to kind of supplement just the retro, and then going forward, you do a raise and appropriate.
Because the retro's a one-time expense.
And that's, that kind of, the last million that we're, we want to, you know, trying to hold on to till the spring, and that was the plan behind it.
Yeah, so, so again, I fully support adding if we have it in the spring, I just don't want to necessarily cut the legs out from under us, so...
So the, the number is fifty thousand right now, and with a, an agreement that in the spring, if there should be more, we will resubmit this article again. All right, I don't love it, but...
Make a motion to recommend Article Six.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article Seven is from the community preservation appropriation recommendations. You'll see that there is nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars for Kids Connection Playground, and forty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the historic resource inventory Phase One.
So just as a procedural thing, this is submitted by the community preservation committee. We usually don't vote on articles that are not ours unless we're requested to.
Article Eight is the, at this point in time, it is a placeholder.
Yeah, that one's...
I, I do want to cover something real quick, not to delay this any longer. But we were provided some guidance from legal counsel, where typically, there were, there was a placeholder for Article Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen for the different unions from the school. Our legal counsel has pointed out that statutorily, there should just be one article for the union contracts, which is different than how we've done it in the past. And so you'll see that in the booklet is the tentative language of what that would be. Again, there, those haven't been finalized, so the amounts are not in there just yet. But once we get that information from the schools, we will fill that information in. And so Article Nine, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, and Thirteen were technically from the preliminary warrant withdrawing.
And so, if I could, through the chairwoman, the way that I understood the town council's opinion is that under the statute, it should only ever have been one warrant article to include every line item funding, is that correct?
That's what they stated, yes.
Can I, so it's obviously something that's different than we've ever historically done, and I think the reason that they were done as individual contracts is because not all the contracts always get settled. So how do we approach, if they're all lumped into one article, how do you, would, would, let me ask the question differently. Is it gonna be one article that's more, that has subarticles in it that would be voted individually?
It would have the...
With the transparency of each?
Yes, it, so if you look on the board, or the TV screen, it basically shows you that it will break it down to show what the costs are for each agreement, but people will be voting on the total appropriation.
Yep.
Okay, so how do you, so just hypothetically, if you're voting on the total appropriation, but school custodians aren't settled, how do you deal with that?
Well, if they aren't settled, then they would be zero.
What if they're settled for more than what's anticipated in the article? You can't go up, you can only go down.
Correct, I believe that the schools have settled with all of the unions at this point, it's just some of them are tentative agreements until they're ratified by the committee, and then also the union themselves. But, so whatever those numbers are, we will receive once those ratifications have occurred.
I'd strongly recommend that somebody be very prepared to explain this in specific detail to town meeting, because it's, it is not anything they're ever used to.
The superintendent and I have had that discussion.
Yeah, but it is spelled out very well, in, in the opinion, I thought.
Yes.
That's my opinion of the legal opinion, so I don't think that we need to vote on this, because we can...
No, not our article.
So you were skipping in then fourteen, right?
Yes.
Ready for fourteen?
Uh, I, so fourteen at this point in time is more of a placeholder, so that one, we don't necessarily need to take action on this evening. Fifteen is to fund the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six town capital budget. You'll see that from the general fund, free... You'll see that from the general fund, free cash, there is $420,000 for an ambulance, and then also from wastewater retained earnings, the sum of 30,000. And so in total, it's a $450,000 article.
So, I don't have an issue with the ambulance one, but obviously, the UTV for the wastewater department is, not a lot of specificity there, but that's a lot of money for UTV. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I, I did some research on it, and, you know, a brand-new 2025 Masomi T-Boss starts at 8,000. Kawasaki Mule 2025, 8,000, 299. Honda Pioneer 500 is 9,600, 9,700. So, I don't know what they're getting besides that. I mean, the, the Landmaster is 11,000. Polaris Ranger, which, in my opinion, Polaris makes one of the better quality units, is 11,499. And then I even looked at the Articat Prowler, and this is an Articat, I don't know which one, but for the 500 4x4, it's, don't tell me I didn't break the price. It wasn't anywhere, oh, it's 9,399. And for the even bigger one is 14,000, $15,000. So I'm kind of curious as to, you know, it's coming from water retained earnings, and when we're spending money from these, this is basically what drives the, in this potato, I'm sorry, the wastewater retained earnings, that's what drives the sewer rates, is what we spend. So, I, I guess I'd like a little more explanation as to what we're getting for $30,000, when I can list off several different manufacturers, including Articat, that are significantly less than 30,000.
I, I will say that Fred can obviously answer that question much better than I, but if we go to the next slide, apparently, this is the vehicle that they currently have that they're looking at replacing, and I do know that they're looking to replace it because of some of the issues that they've had with this one, and how they end up using it with something, something more rugged than this one. Beyond that, again, I would, I would yield to Fred, but.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with replacing an obsolete piece of equipment, but it's, the, the numbers are vastly different from my research to the $30,000, so.
Make a motion to recommend Article 15.
Are we done discussing? Did you have any other comments?
Well, I, I was gonna, what I was going to suggest is, we're not going to be doing all of these tonight. Can we hold off on this one and let Fred, even if he just sends an email explaining what it is to justify the $30,000, and we can vote on, we vote on the next batch of articles, you know, at the next meeting?
That's going to be, sorry, Article 13.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy with just an emailed explanation of what, what got us to 30,000. So, if we could.
Revisit this on the 6th, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could, I think, just as a recommendation to the town manager, should also be updated to include an explanation, because that's not on this one.
Okay. So 17 would be next?
Yes. 16?
16 is School Committee.
School Committee, so.
Oh, yeah. 17 was the one that we discussed previously regarding the police station and modifying that to $640,000 to fund the design work.
We already voted to recommend it.
Yep.
Actually, we didn't. We voted to make it 600,000. We didn't vote to recommend Article 17.
Make a motion to recommend Article 17.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 18 is to fund the 250th Celebration in July. They were seeking $25,000.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to get an update from the chairman of the 250th Committee before we approve this. There's been a number of resignations, and some questions were raised to me in person by individuals that are concerned about not getting accurate treasurer's reports. So I'd like to get some information on that before we move ahead with including a line item budget, just to make sure everything is being worked out properly.
So, Mr. Jones, for this one, are we able to get just kind of a detailed itemized for the 25,000?
They were just seeking it. They're, they're raising much more than that, but if this is something that you want to hold off, I could potentially have the chair come to the next meeting.
Yep, we could have the chair come to the, next, did you have something to say?
Yeah, this is, uh, to the summer celebration of July 26th, this could actually go on a spring town.
Hmm.
Yeah. I mean, especially if we're worried about spending free cash, not, not buying land, which is there forever.
Keeping the lights on here.
I want to know the lights.
Pay the lights.
I do have a, I do have a question about that, though. If it's, if it's get, if it gets moved to the spring, if it's a July celebration, and I'm assuming it's for the 4th.
It is, yeah.
And maybe it'd be, it would probably be a question for Amit, will the, the line item transfer get over to them in time in order to be able to pull it, pull off the event?
We wait until spring?
Yes, okay. So we, so tech, it could go to the spring and they'll still have, be able to have the money in time. Okay. Thank you. So, are we agreeing to do that, or are we just going to?
Yeah, I think if they will get their funding in, in time, why not just push it to spring?
So, then, do we need to make a motion to withdraw this article?
Well, it's not ours, that's the problem.
Well, there, it's a select board committee.
That's a valid point.
Are they allowed to submit articles, just a subcommittee of the select board?
So, I will, I will say that there was conversations had between the committee and my office, and so that's how this ended up getting on there, so.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion here.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, just because I don't know if that's legal or not.
Article 19 is to fund the requirements for street acceptance for $50,000. This was something that, in talking to the town engineer back in 2018, there was an appropriation to put money into basically what they're required to do for survey work and everything that they do for street acceptance. That money has pretty much been used up, so they're looking to replenish that. So therefore, we have this article. And, and I will say, in conversations with them, because questions were asked actually through the finance committee, as we're going through that process discussing this, is some years, they use a lot of the money, and then there's other years that they use hardly any. So, it's, it's not one of those things of like 5,000 this year, 5,000 next year. It kind of depends on what we're looking to do for street acceptance and what we're requested to do.
Okay.
So, was it $50,000 back in 2018?
I believe so.
It was. So, if it took from 2018 to now to spend $50,000, and again, we're concerned about free cash and having it available, why don't we pair, I, I agree that we should have money available to do this, but you're talking almost seven years to use 50,000. Why don't we pair the 50,000 down to like 25,000, and then we can readdress it after we've got our electrical issue solved and whatever other funding things that are coming up. I, it just, it doesn't make sense to me to, we just had a whole discussion about how important it is not to spend all the free cash and not follow a directive that was unanimously supported by this board, and I accepted that, but then to say, we're going to spend $50,000 and it's going to take approximately seven years to use it, we don't need to do this all right now.
The one thing I will say for the seven years is the fact that COVID occurred through there, and from my understanding, there weren't a lot of requests during that time. Beyond that, I, I don't know if Amit wanted to add anything to.
No, just, just to add from conversations with Fred and Kelly is that he acknowledged exactly what you said, you know, that it took them this long to spend this money, but not every year is the same for them, right? There might be a year where they might get petitioners to come out with eight streets or nine streets, and he kind of needs the, you know, the flexibility of having the funding there. And I, I want to say he mentioned, and you know, between, depending on how, what the street size is and what the length is, each street between all the work is about five to six grand. That's kind of what the buy is. And that, that's, you know, the reason why he was kind of seeking the 50, to have that flexibility that, you know, if we do get a lot of petitioners for the acceptance of the roads, he needs, you know, he wants to have the funding there in place to do the work and, and get it moving.
We have accepted quite a bit of roads in the last couple of years, and I think if we cut that to 25,000, that would certainly get them through till the next free cash season. And they could ask, I mean, this could be a reoccurring article and not do it every seven years, as opposed to tying up $50,000 if we've got contract stuff we're worried about and electric bills we're worried about. It just seems to make sense to just do it at 25,000.
But then what if we get this year, it ends up being 30K, then like, is that worth the risk versus just, I don't think so. I support it as presented.
It, it took them seven years to use 50,000. They're not going to use 25 in, between now and next fall, when free cash will be available again.
Mr. Jones?
Um, we're probably, we've got a few more things going here. Probably better off waiting till the 6th to talk about all these street acceptance, the sledge factory, the hydrants, when we have Fred and Kelly here. I mean, Chris is getting served up what he got left over, and Amit's been here a year. So I'm sure if we want to talk about what hydrants have been maintenance, we could ask Fred, or, you know, what streets have been accepted, what ones to do. Kelly would have the better answers. I mean, Chris does know a little bit of Boston Road. He did walk from 480 down to the mosh about the Ford Street.
Was about a half a mile of it.
He, he did pretty good on that, but I think our best bet would be waiting for the two department heads to get here.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I agree with that. I, I do have.
So we'll hold that till the 6th?
Yep.
Should we just give, make a, should we just make a list of the warrant articles that we're going to hold till the 6th? That way there, we can get through the rest, because I think Article 22 should also be moved. I have this recollection, and I apologize, it's a little fuzzy, because there's been a lot that's gone on, but I feel like we already funded this, didn't we?
19 to 25?
So 14, 15, 18, 19, 22, 25.
25?
20 is good. I think we're familiar enough with those, that expense.
Yeah, I mean, 20 is, um, good, not good with the amount, but I mean, we need to keep that project moving forward.
Yeah, we need to keep that one. So, 19, 21 through 25, is that what we're agreeing to?
Yes.
So those are all articles that Fred is kind of heading up.
Yeah. Uh-huh. So then we just need to address 19 right now?
Uh, 20.
20.
20, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to hold 19.
Make a motion to recommend Article 20.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You like that, huh?
No, actually.
All right.
26, 27, 28, and 29 were all submitted from the finance committee.
So, 22, can I just, well, I know that we're going to take it up with Fred, but.
I feel like we, we didn't already fund that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. That's what I, that's what I was just saying. I feel like we already did that.
No, you, this is the Crosby Hill Water Tower for 2.5 million.
Yeah, I think.
He had a past warrant article. I don't remember the exact details that were in it.
3 million.
3 million, thank you.
So, so I will say that there was, the 3 million was based off of information we received from our consultant, and after further review, they realized that there's additional damage, and the cost to do the work that needs to be done is on both water tanks. It includes, and again, Fred can speak to this better than I, but it's both the inside liner and the outside that they're going to be doing. And so that's what the additional 2.5 million is, is to kind of bring it up to what is needed to do both water tanks, towers.
But this one is specific to the Crosby Hill, right?
And Boston Road.
It's both, it's both water tanks, towers.
Well, I think that we ought to reach out to town council about this lease, because there's a lot of money at play here, and I don't know, maybe Amit can answer it, but according to the lease, you know, we're taking in.
56,000?
$56,192 a year in rent for that water tower. Are we keeping that in a separate account to use for maintenance of the water tanks, or is it just coming in as a general fund and being spent? And you, you, you can account for all of it coming in, we're definitely getting paid? Okay.
Should we, Madam Chair, if I could, should we create a debt stabilization account for that specific funding source through that lease in order to use it for maintenance?
Well.
When we get back from October 6th here from town council, Fred and Kelly, and.
I think that's a separate discussion, but I, I do think that, as I read to town council when we were talking to him, that it's, they have to keep all the approvals in place. One of the approvals is that 1997 zoning board of appeals that said that they will, AT&amp;T for the Crosby Hill Water Tank will be responsible for painting it. And this is a, this is a functioning lease, because even when the email was sent out on March 6, 2025, it's self-renewing in five-year increments, with a, with a, I think a 4% escalation clause, yeah, section B here, 4% escalation clause every time it renews. So then it goes up in the second phase, it would be 292,284. But I think this needs to have another look at it, because that 10-year moratorium, to me, is not in play when you've got a lease that says you have to abide by everything, and it specifically says, ability to obtain and maintain all governmental licenses, permits, and approvals, or other relief required, zoning board of appeal special conditions is the other relief that's required, of deemed necessary or appropriate by the tenant for the use of the premises. So, I'll forward you a copy of this, and I think that we really need to take a hard look at that, because I think AT&amp;T is still on the hook, in my opinion.
Madam Rosa, can you send me a copy of it as well, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'll send everybody a copy of it, and then.
Thank you.
Everyone will have it.
I think we're on 30? Those are finance committee, not our articles.
Article 30 is to grant an easement to National Grid for electric distribution, and this, actually, is another one that, am I on the wrong one? Nope.
What happened in 26 and 27?
Fred can speak to this better than I, but from my understanding, they're, they need an easement, and one of the things that has changed with the electric line is before the town was responsible from kind of the out on the one road, I believe the, does it have the map on there? Yes. So from the one location, the, the road there, the town actually has been responsible for that whole duration, whereas now, National Grid, I believe, is going to be responsible for it with this and kind of the work that's being done down there, so.
Um, we've already granted a license for this. I'm okay with voting it, because it's all we're doing. We granted the license because you have to go to town meeting for an electrical easement, so it's just the next step.
Make a motion to recommend Article 30.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 31 is to vote to deed, actually, was this, this is submitted by the Open Space Recreation Committee, so is this one that you?
Yeah, so, the, hang on a second, do we have the presentation? Yeah. So, in cats here, as well. So, as Chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, one of the things that we did one of the things that we did was we had some students go through at the request of the board, I asked the board to send a request to the Open Space and Recreation Committee to evaluate, um, properties in Billrica that either had Article 97 protection, should have Article 97 protection, or should be protected and rank them. And the students have done that. It's not complete 100%, but it's enough for us to get started. There were nearly 800 parcels of land built with civic buildings, you know, the school, library, and so on. Some of them are just tax titled, donation land, conservation land. So the Tufts students categorized it all, and we have, hey, Kat, how many parcels in total is it?
I know. Of the perfectly ranking ones?
The ones that we're going to be wanting to transfer.
So the Tufts found 27 perfectly ranking ones, and then including the surrounding town-owned ones that are in the same situation, it's a total of 76, I believe.
So what we're, these parcels are in the care custody control of the Select Board, and we're asking to transfer them over to the Conservation Commission to protect them. One of the things that the Open Space Committee asked Kat to reach out and do is to go through the departments in town and make sure that there were no municipal needs for any of these. On the very last page of this in red, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine of them, I believe, um, that there are some municipal needs, and we looked at trying to get something from Town Council that would leave language that if the town DPW needed them, they could, and we just got word back that that can't be done. So we'd be pulling the ones that are in red from the final article. And of course, I wanted to bring this before the Select Board because they're in our care custody and control, and we have to be, want to be willing to turn them over to the Conservation Commission to, to be protected. And if you look at them, um, the, the blue ones, Dawn, if we can go back to the slides with the pictures, there we go. There we go. Um, so...
It's a presentation on the screen, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so the, so the bluish-green color is already in conservation. The purple ones are the ones that we're recommending we transfer over to conservation. Most of these are predominantly wetlands abutting the Concord River, and as you can see from that slide, it makes the land that the Conservation Commission already have more contiguous, um, and just makes it a bigger parcel to protect. And of course, with the Concord River being a drinking water supply, that makes a lot of sense to do that. And we can go through each of them. They're all, um, the same color coding. The purple are the ones that we'd be transferring.
That's my grant.
I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Madam Chair? I support this. I supported it in the initial phase. I actually made sure that my family's land that was taken for taxes, but years and years ago, was included. So I do have a recommendation for the lead-in language of the warrant article, but I'm not sure if it changes any kind of legality. But I think the word "in perpetuity" needs to be added in the warrant. So that way there, nothing changes 30 years from now.
I don't, I can't.
Chair, through you, all say on the language is we had it drafted, and it could certainly be changed by anyone at that point. It was just a draft. It has gone through legal opinion, and they did significantly redline what we had originally drafted. So the final warrant draft in front of you guys today does have all of those legal opinion redlines incorporated.
Was your original draft, did your original draft include language that said to keep it in conservation in perpetuity?
It did not.
Okay. Would the board be in agreement with a friendly amendment to that?
I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I would just say, um, that we just check with Town Council, it doesn't have any negative impacts to it. We've got to rework it anyway to take out the red parcels, so.
So I think I would just, um, add that for conservation purposes in perpetuity, comma, and then it would say to support the goals of open space and RAC.
I don't see that as a problem, and if there is, we can change it. We'll ask Town Council to look at it. So I don't have a problem with us adding that in because we obviously want to protect this forever.
Right.
I guess I'll make a motion that we recommend Article 31 as amended to add the word perpetuity in the article.
Second.
With the removal of the red highlighted.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yeah, this is just a petitioner's article that I submitted. It would just, it's a proposed charter amendment that would ensure all referendum elections are decided by majority vote.
I didn't hear what he said.
Oh, yeah, so this is just a petitioner, elected petitioner's article that I submitted, and what it would do would ensure that, it would be a charter amendment that would ensure that all referendum elections are decided by a majority vote.
So, if I may? Yeah, I, I know there's, um, the legal opinion said this is legal to form, and it probably is legal to form, but I, I don't think that this is right. If you look at, uh, you only have to look at the first sentence in Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, to realize that you can't do this. And it says, "Cities and towns may incur debt by a two-thirds vote within the limit of indebtedness prescribed in Section 10." You can't change Mass. General Law through the charter. And the way the charter is structured...
That would still be required. If you were to incur debt, you would still need a two-thirds vote at town meeting.
That's correct, but this is for the referendum process within the charter. You're trying to say that if we get a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and then it goes to a referendum, that it only needs to be a majority vote to then pass.
Yes, so you would need to have a majority vote in the negative to strike it down.
You can't do that because you would need a two-thirds vote. That's why the charter is worded the way that it is.
The Town Council, didn't they say it's legal in form?
No. They said, they said it's legal to form, which means it's formatted correctly, but it requires public hearings, it requires a bunch of other stuff.
That's actually not true. We've had this discrepancy.
Right here. You have Town Council's opinion?
I think, I think I have the floor, I'm not sure.
Thank you. If you look at the town charter under referendum procedure, Section C, it's five sentences down, and it talks about "The vote of the town meeting members be referred to the voters at large for a final determination. Then the operations of any such vote shall further suspend." So once that goes to the town, to the electorate for a referendum, the town meeting vote is null and void.
No.
Yes, it is.
It's very delicate.
It, it is null and void, and then the referendum is what's going to approve that bonding article if it's a two-thirds bonding article. You can't, and that's why Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, says that the debt, which is bonding, needs to be a two-thirds vote. So it would need to be a two-thirds vote at the electorate as well. You can't change it to a simple majority.
Mr. Dale, is this something that we can declare?
This is, it's not even a Select Board article, it's ultimately going to be town meeting's decision.
Or a Select Board number. You put it on the warrant, we're going to vote on it.
You can vote on it, you can do that too. But, yeah, the point of this article is, there's essentially a loophole at our town charter that if an article were to pass at town meeting, for example, bond authorization that requires a two-thirds vote, someone could get the signatures to put it on the ballot, and 34% of the voters could just strike it down. And I find that very anti-small-d democratic, and it could, in a state where it's legal for people to, uh, pay people to get signatures for election papers, for nomination papers, someone could pay someone $10,000 to strike down any two-thirds article that they don't like. For something like education, when we have school, we're building schools, it requires, it likely would require a bond authorization. I wouldn't see a situation where it didn't. Uh, if you have a situation where you don't have six, two-thirds vote of the general population, someone could strike it down. The police station, if we were to bring forward the police station, and it's not, and it's 55% of the people that support it, or 60% of the voters at large after getting a super majority of town meeting, then that small majority, minority would be able to strike it down. All this article does, it, I brought this forward a year and a half ago at representative town meeting.
Failed then, too.
Right, it got a, she is disrespectful, but, um, it, it got, yeah, she was short of two votes of that, because this also requires a super majority, I'm reintroducing it because town meeting has changed since then, the attitude of the town has changed then, I'm reintroducing it, and at the time, uh, Town Council did not have the, uh, legal concerns. They said they, we can look up, go back to the fall 2024, I'm sorry, spring 2024, town meeting, at the time, they made it clear, this, those concerns would not be the truth, it would be legal, and there are towns throughout the state that do essentially have this language in their town charter. So that's all it does. It's not a Select Board article, it is a petitioner's article, so we can't withdraw it by any means. Ultimately, it will be town meeting's decision.
Okay, so we can, we can hold on this tonight, and then, um, just requiring like additional information. We can, we can...
So...
Are we going to finish discussion because I have some comments?
I, I'm not sure if, I somehow lost the floor, but I think that that is not correct. And I'll give you a perfect example of why that's not correct. Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020, and what is in that is when they changed the vote from two-thirds to a majority to create housing. That had to go through the House of Representatives and get it affirmatively voted, had to go through the Senate and get affirmatively voted, and then signed by the governor. To change that law that required a two-thirds vote for zoning changes to go from two-thirds to a majority if you're creating housing, you can't change a two-thirds vote that's required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, that says you need a two-thirds vote for bonding, in an article for the town charter.
And that's not what this is doing.
It's exactly what it's doing.
So this, it's no longer up for discussion, we can take a vote now, but I'd like to keep moving with the, with the agenda.
I would like to make my comments, Madam Chairwoman. All right, let's look at work, go ahead. Town Council's opinion specifically states, "We also note that the public, that a public hearing is required at the earliest convenient time, not later than three months after the date it suggested amendment is filed with the town clerk. The Board of Selectmen shall order a public hearing to be held thereon before it or before a committee selected or established by it for the purpose, provided that any number of suggested amendments may be considered at the same time. Such a hearing shall be held not later than four months after the filing date of any suggested amendment to be considered." We currently have the Charter Review Committee reviewing the entire charter to make amendments that falls under their purview. So why would we take this out of order and take the authority away from that committee that's formed by us and town meeting to make recommended changes? And if we're not going to do that, then we need to schedule a public hearing, and we don't have enough time to do that before October 7th. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks.
Again, that's something that we need to get Town Council to work out on because...
Town Council's opinion is in our packet.
I'm finishing this real quick. Mike Rosa did submit a, in the same process where it was an elected's article, he submitted a charter amendment for the same section of the town charter, no public hearing, it's amended, the voters supported it with a simple majority vote.
The opinion on your specific warrant article is in our packet.
We're going to get the opinion worked out.
Moving on.
So we're making a motion to recommend, or we're making a motion to schedule a public hearing because that's the required procedure?
Our article.
Moving on. So we're not going to follow proper process and procedure, recommended by an attorney that we're paying to provide the...
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was, what was said?
We're going to get some additional information, and we're going to revisit this on October 6th.
Okay.
Article 33 is to vote to amend the Zoning Bylaw Section 7.16.
It's a Planning Board article.
Yes.
The next one.
I apologize.
What will be next?
Yep. Article 34 is to vote on a home rule petition to the General Court authorizing the town of Billrica to establish an age limit for original appointment to the position of police officer. I will say that I had a conversation with the chief prior to this meeting, and I would like to take this up at the next meeting because I believe this language is going to change slightly after an additional legal review.
Okay.
So October 6th?
Yes.
So 35.
Article 35 is to vote to amend the zoning bylaw table of uses regulations, Section 6.3, Appendix A.
So this is, um, we talked about this at our special Select Board meeting, and a lot of the changes that we talked about then are incorporated in this. I think the two big differences, we talked about the adult daycare, um, and it's been added in, and since then, the Planning Board has voted a definition of what adult daycare is, correct, Ken?
That's correct, yes. So the final draft warrant will have the text changes that would be in Section 2 and Section 7 as well to make these table of use changes work.
And these, these are the changes as we talked about at our special meeting, and after that meeting, just to let the board know, I went to the very next Planning Board meeting and presented all this to them, and then they've had, what, two subsequent meetings, including the public hearing on this, to discuss it and go through it.
Correct, their introduction, their vote to sponsor it, and then the official public hearing.
Yep. Um, and it's, they're, you know, recommending it, and I hope that we will as well. It's going to be a joint article between us and the Planning Board, and as we've talked about, you know, by helping to fill these vacant commercial industrial spaces, we'll help with, um, you know, bringing in tax revenue to keep our residential taxes lower, as well as some of these businesses, their personal property taxes exceed their real estate taxes. So hopefully that'll help with the real estate taxes on the residential side. So I hope everyone will support it and happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, if I may add, at the June 11th meeting, your vote was in support of the idea with a draft coming back to you guys, so I would just ask for one additional cosponsorship vote from you tonight, just to verify that you're also on this warrant.
Yeah. Well, it's already cosponsorship bias, yeah. Make a motion to recommend Article 35 to town meeting.
On the, on the motion? Yeah, and I support this, I will always support making it easy for people to do business in town. I don't think this goes far enough, and I think in the future we should look into, you know, allowing businesses to do their thing and stop getting, if they want to invest money in their town, we should be more than willing than trying to work with them and have, you know, really less restrictions on what people can do with their own property. That's just my stance, but I'm, yeah, supportive of it.
There's a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
36 is also an elected petitioner's article. When I got on the board, I first had this conversation with Clancy related to this, and after just seeing a resident who was not able to walk, struggled to get to the bus stop in their wheelchair because the sidewalks weren't removed, and we have a snow removal by law currently, and base, basically it just requires, you know, adjacent parcel owners to remove the snow of sidewalks that, you know, about their property. And basically his answer to the question was that because the fine's so low, this essentially hasn't been enforced, so it would just increase the fine from 10 to 75 to a more reasonable amount for the year 2025.
What if they're not physically capable of removing the snow?
So, yeah, so when it comes to that, you know, there'll be time for people to make arrangements, the Attorney General ultimately has to approve this bylaw change, but currently it's the property owner's responsibility to remove the snow, and, you know, we need people that are disabled to be able to access all our sidewalks, school kids to access our sidewalks, and then ultimately it's up to the discretion of the Police Department when they issue citations for it.
Just to clarify a question, is it actually the Police Department that enforces this?
It is, it says it in the larger bylaw.
Um, and then to the Chair's point, I... And then, to the Chair's point, I, I know we don't enforce it because it's $10, but I think the other reason is, there's a lot of elderly people that may not have the ability to clean it. I mean, it's going to be an added cost to them if, you know, you're paying to snow, have your driveway cleared, and then you have to pay to have the sidewalk cleared. You know, these guys charge as soon as they have to get out of the truck. And a guy with a plow may plow a driveway, but he's not going to have a snow blower to do a sidewalk, or he may not have a shovel, or he'll charge a lot more if he's shoveling or getting out and running a snow blower. And I just have concern about impacting people that, you're trying to help a certain demographic, and I don't, and I agree with that, but there's a balance, right? You don't want to help some people by hurting a lot of other people. And when you get into sidewalks in front of elderly people's homes, and they have to pay an added fee to clear it, you know, we always try to help our seniors, and I don't know that this is going to help if we start whacking them with a $75 fine. And then, there's also a cost incurred to fines. You know, we, you fine somebody, and then they, what are you going to do to go to, you're going to go to court? Is there an appeals process? I just.
But the Police Department, it would be up to, like, they wouldn't have to whack someone with a fine if they're elderly or something like that?
Doesn't, it doesn't, you know what, I, I would almost rather see some structure where you get a written warning than maybe an escalating fine or something like that than just start hitting people $75 fines. I mean, I snow blow out my own, the fire hydrant near my house, but not everyone has the ability to do that. And I just have concerns for those people that I don't have the ability to do it.
Structure, like language around like?
Yeah, so the bylaw is a thorough bylaw that town meeting already approved, this just increases the fine. So that, all that structure is in the bylaw already. This just changes, increases the amount. But I don't know if Mr. Dillon has a comment on this about the enforcement process.
Madam Chair.
I, I'm speaking. But I, I know we can spread awareness prior to a going effect. Ultimately, you have to wait for the Attorney General's Office to approve it. But yeah, I mean, they have discretion on their fines.
I, I can't necessarily speak for the Police Department, but obviously, they care for the people in the community. If there's a situation, they're, they're not necessarily going to hit somebody that, they're going to do what they can to help them, but again.
Select one, Fabra.
I think Mr. Daniel Darris O'Connor had another comment. I'm, I'm going to wait for him to finish before I get interrupted.
I can finish real quick then, I guess. Yeah, yeah, so the, the goal is not punitive, the goal is public safety and accessibility, and we just, we need to ensure, this is just some things, there's responsibilities with owning a property, and this is one of them in our town.
Yep.
Thank you. So I, I think that a $75 increase on the fine is extremely steep, especially for elderly and people living on fixed incomes. And we've addressed the enforceability component. We don't have the manpower, multiple times over the last year and a half, there are finding mechanisms throughout all different function of government, and we've been told multiple times that the enforceability component is non-existent. They can't, they don't have the manpower to do it. And so I think that this would add an increase on our resources, and will impact the elderly demographic significantly. So I'm not going to support this.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's tough, you know, my, my neighbor's handicapped, she's an elderly woman, she's in a wheelchair, right across from Suckman Rose's mother's house. I was driving by last winter, and a woman was in a rush to get her hair done, her monthly appointment, she got stuck in the snowbank, so I found myself getting her, getting her car out. It's, it's difficult. You know, you got people that go to Florida for the winter, so they're going to come home and find, you know, a stack of $75 tickets on their lawn. You could open up a can of worms where, all right, I didn't shovel in front of my house, I got a $75 ticket, but my neighbor that's got three or four kids, and they all park on the street, their cars on tow during the snow ban. We went through that a couple of years ago with the enforcement following, I think it was right after Thanksgiving or something, no one's street parking, if a snowflake hits the ground, you know, it used to be a day where you'd go out in the street, you'd see kids grabbing shovels, go down the street and helping out their neighbors, and that was a good thing to do, it'd be nice to see that to start coming back. But I think there's got to be some sort of medium in there, you know, not 75, not 10, you know, maybe $20, have a, a warning system, hey, one written one, two written one, and $20 fine. Then you go maybe appeal it, but 75 bucks is steep, especially if someone's on a fixed income, a single parent, someone with disabilities, like, oh, we see now, and you look at it, whether it's a business owner, a business owner's home because of their kids don't have school, so now they can't get up to say, let's just say Liberty Bell, or something, clean up there. The town gets, you know, a certain amount of hours to get up and clear the sidewalks in front of the library. It's just difficult. I understand the, the concept, you know, try, try to get people to do more, but I think hitting them in the wallet sometimes is a little too, too harsh. Thank you.
I made, it's not a select board article, it's just an individual article I submitted.
We make it, I make a motion, a motion to recommend Article 36 to town meeting.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Who is that?
Three, two, right?
Two in favor, three opposed.
Three opposed.
Oh, three opposed, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider Article 18. The petitioner is here, that's the 25,000th of the 250th Committee.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
John, what number was that, 25 you said?
18.
I know which one it is, but, okay, 18, yeah.
So Mr. Senna, I know that you were requesting on $25,000 for a July celebration.
Correct.
We were recommending to move it to spring town meeting, that it's not due till July, but I understand that there may be concerns about pushing it out to town meeting.
There would be. So considering everything that we'd have to book, potentially put deposits down, get everything situated so that we can have this large event, it would be ideal to at least have it in the coffers in order for us to be able to do so. At the end of the day, it is in the town account's bank account, and everything is accounted for by Mr. Emmett. So, you know, I'm, didn't really want to have to come up here tonight because I wasn't told that I have to be here. I was told that all I had to go was to the Finance Committee, so I'm a little perplexed as to why this is being put up like this right now. So I guess there was an issue that was brought up regarding the funds, and as the Chair, I'd like to know what, exactly what that is.
I, I actually asked for you to come before us at another meeting to give us an update on committee activities, and we can address it then.
Say that again?
Then we can, we can address the concerns then, because that's separate from what we're addressing on the warrant right now.
That is fine. However, if that's, if that was, my understanding was that that was reflecting as to why this was getting pushed.
I said I had questions, and I asked for you to come before us.
Okay.
To give us an update.
Would you like me to give that to you now?
Well, you can't. It's not on our agenda.
Make a motion to approve Article 18 and the sum of $25,000 to fund the 250th celebration in July.
Wait, we, we, hold on. What was the first motion?
Motion to approve Article 18.
No, but we withdrew it, so how do we?
I made a motion to reconsider.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yeah.
So is the motion to reconsider Article 18?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second the motion to reconsider it.
Already.
You already seconded it, didn't you?
We, the motion to reconsider passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, I did, and we went back to it.
Okay. So can I just ask, thank you, Mr. Dillon, for coming up.
Who?
I'm sorry.
Come on, Mike.
The Senate.
But also, thank you.
All right.
I've been saying Chris Dillon all night. Could you just give us a little, so part of the reason they came up was, we had a warrant article to put in money to the land bank account, and it was supposed to be at $500,000 from free cash, and it was reduced down to $50,000 because we were told we've got potentially $350,000 in electric bills that we're going to need to pay.
Okay.
From free cash. So we scaled that back. I also advocated that we lower the amount of money for the free cash request from the DPW for roads, road surveying work for, to accept roads, from $50,000 down to $25,000, which we haven't voted on yet. But because it took them seven years to use the $50,000 in free cash. So if we're having an issue, my question is, can you just give us a quick overview of what you're planning on spending the $25,000 on?
So we.
Ask that at the Finance Committee, too.
Yeah, which is fine. So this is a once in 250-year celebration that we're trying to put on. Currently, we're going out to corporate sponsors, trying to get money from them as well. We do have fireworks booked for July 2nd, either at Vietnam Veterans Park, or it's going to be at the Marshall, and it's going to be a pretty elaborate show. Like I said, this is the one and only Billerica 4th of July fireworks that we'll ever have. In addition to that, we're looking at putting vendors, we're going to have beer gardens, a bunch of activities for kids. It's going to be, hopefully a giant festival, right? But like I said, the 25 grand that we'd be receiving, it does go into the account, and it would expire with us in July if we didn't end up using it. So I see no harm, no foul. However, we do have a lot of, lot of traction, lot of ground that we are covering, trying to get this up and running. We've had a lot of company, you know, corporate donors as well, and we'll, we need more. We're going to need quite a bit of money, a bit of money to pull this off. Yeah.
Thank, thank you for that, and it kind of was a plug for the 250th as well, so.
That's kind of the goal, right? Every time I come up here?
Get the word out, right?
Yeah, like I said, I was cutting my dog's nails, and I was like, oh, son of a bitch, I gotta get out there. So, all right. Is anyone else?
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You can go home, Chris, if you want.
Hang on.
I think we're done, I think. That's Veterans, oh, Donny Javis.
Yes. Article 37 is to vote to accept Chapter 60, Section 3F of the Massachusetts General Laws. What this will do is basically provide the opportunity for somebody to check off on their vehicle excise bill if they wanted to, and the municipal property tax bill, if they wanted to make a donation towards the veterans.
So I don't have an issue with this. I will, though, say that, being on the Scholarship Committee, we've always put a flyer in the tax bills, and it's gone out for decades for people to make donations as well. So I just wanted to let you know that I certainly support anything to help our veterans, and if somebody wants to make a donation, that's great, but there's also the insert that goes in for the Scholarship Committee, stroke the land. So, thank you.
Thank you. Make a motion to recommend Article 37.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You did.
Article 38 is a petitioner article to amend the zoning bylaws and zoning map.
So, it begins. So I, I guess, I think up first, we have a, quite a few people in the room that would like to speak on this. So in the past, when we have an article like this, that we're trying to determine if it goes to town meeting at all, do we?
It does go to town meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of having folks come up, like, how have we?
I guess the first question is, we have to ask if they want us to make a recommendation on it, because it's a petitioner article, and we do that only when asked to recommend them.
And they're not here, we didn't request it.
Everybody, everybody is here.
They are here.
Everybody is here.
If you'd like to come up and speak on it. Thanks for the clarification on process.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Brian McGrath. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ralph Dalton, who's one of the lead petitioners on this article, and I'm also here on behalf of Swanson Meadows Golf Course, Inc., which is the owner of one of the properties that would be affected by this article. We would like a recommendation or your consideration, whatever you deem appropriate. My goal is to provide you information on this article, which is always good, and maybe other people who are listening, and the purpose of this article, and the opportunities that it presents to the town of Billerica and its residents. If passed by town meeting, this article will overlay and apply the elderly housing overlay district on three parcels of land. One is identified as Map 38, Parcel 6-1. It has an address of 222 Range Way Road. Another is Map 38, Parcel 510 on the Assessors' Map, and that has an address of 216 and 1/2 Range Way Road. The first, the first parcel is a piece of, is a home that is on Range Way Road in the vicinity of the golf course. The third parcel is land identified as Map 58, Parcel 2-4, has an address of Parcel B off Republic Road in Billerica, and that is property which is in the rear and adjacent to and abutting Swanson Meadows Golf Course. As I mentioned, this would allow the possibility, and I stress the word possibility, of 55 and over housing on these properties. When you combine these properties, they're approximately over 100 acres of land combined. This article is about providing choices to the town of Billerica as it relates to the possible future uses of the Swanson Meadows Golf Course and the adjacent properties. Swanson Meadows is currently in the rural residential zoning district. The property outback is in the neighborhood district. One obvious future possible use of Swanson Meadows Golf Course would be single-family houses. As I've mentioned, it's owned for that, it's allowed by right now under our current zoning bylaw. Swanson Meadows has retained Allen &amp; Major Engineering, a very well-respected site civil engineering firm out of Auburn, to do a study on this property. They've determined that based on 50,000 square foot lot requirements under the current Billerica zoning bylaw, that approximately 45 single-family homes could be constructed on the property. One could assume that many of those houses would have accessory dwelling units, which are now allowed by right under state law. I'm a land use attorney, I've been practicing for, I hate to say it, well over 30 years now in the state, and most of my developer clients, when they're constructing new houses now, are putting ADUs in the houses. Very easy for them to do it when, when there's new houses being constructed. Increases the value and the opportunities that come with it. So you can assume that many of those 40, approximately 45 houses would, would have ADUs, so the population would increase, including school-aged children on the property would increase. As I've mentioned, this article is about providing options for the town, and that option being the 55 and over housing. When you compare 55 and over housing, it provides a significant benefits to the, to the community. It frees up family housing, so when older residents downsize into age-restricted housing, it opens up larger homes for younger families, helping ease the housing crisis, housing shortages, and improves the turnover in residential neighborhoods, creates opportunities for younger families to have houses open for sale. Reduce strain on local services compared to single-family houses. With the exception of police and fire services, 55 and over, communities have little reliance on public services and infrastructure. As I've mentioned, no school-aged children, no public works, trash pickup, no snow plowing, it's all private, so everything is done within the community, within the homeowners association, similar to a condominium, that there'd be very little financial impact to the community. Certainly, an economic boost, the 55 and older communities stimulate the local economies, seniors tend to support local businesses, especially those offering healthcare, dining, and leisure activities. And there's a much lower crime rate that comes with these 55 and older communities. They foster quieter, more stable environments, which can positively influence the community as a whole. And, and people that live in these communities tend to volunteer, they're involved, a lot of them are retired, they give back to the community, and they participate. And these types of developments also promote land use efficiency. Typically, they're built as clustered homes, so reduce the overall land consumption compared to single-family homes that are built on these large independent 50,000 square foot lots with the typical swimming pools, the ADUs, and all the accessories that go with them. The option for significant open space with these developments compared to single-family homes is immense. Swanson Meadows also had Allen &amp; Major and an architectural firm by the name of U Architects look at possibilities for this site as far as 55 and older. They recently did that. They came up with a maximum number of 162 units that could, could go on the site. That's the number that we presented, and we stand by. Probably it would be less, you know, when you always say the maximum, You know, when you always say the maximum, it usually turns out to be less than that. I've talked about, you know, some of the benefits. And one of the bigger benefits for 55 and older option or possibility for the community is the financial impact. I heard some of your discussions earlier tonight, and one of the discussions was recurring revenue. This will provide significant recurring revenue if it were to go forward in the future. We retained 4G or Planning and Development. They are economic specialists in looking at developmental impacts on communities. I've used them before in other communities. They've looked at this in particular. They based it on construction of 150 unit, you know, units on the site. And they factored in that 15% of those would be affordable units, because that's required under your zoning bylaw with this overlay district. That 15% of the houses would have to be affordable units. And I also want to state that, that under state law, those 15% affordable units the town could require as part of the regulatory agreement that there would be a priority for up to 70% of those are local preference for current Billerica residents and/or town employees on those affordable units. So in any event, 4G or Planning took a look at this, and they came up with a market rate townhome price of $875,000 for the full map market units, which we think is a pretty conservative number, considering, you know, Billerica's a very desirable community now. You have a very desirable town. When you look at where the home prices have gone, they keep going up and up and up. And they plugged in an affordable unit price of $310,000, because you can't take credit for the full assessed value on the affordable units. So 4G came up with a, the community is estimated to generate 1.35 million in annual property tax revenue for a development of this nature, when you look at the taxes. That would be also add on a $56,000 in vehicle excise tax revenue that could be generated, according to 4G. So the total annual community recurring revenue would be a total of about 1.4 million. As far as the impacts, as I mentioned, the fiscal impacts to the community, you know, the main ones are fire and police. 4G took a look at that. They're stating to me that an estimated 67 police calls would be generated annually for facility of this nature. They did that by their database that they have. They do a lot of this. They're reporting to me that the Billerica Department responded to some 37,000 calls for service in 2024. So looking at those numbers, they're telling me that there would be an estimated 41 fire department calls that would be generated. 21 would be fire-related approximately, and 20 EMS. The fire department responded to some 6,500 calls in 2024. They're also telling me that EMS would generate some revenue for the town. This doesn't even include the building permit fees, which would probably be in excess of $1 million, the one-time fees, not recurring, if a project of this nature were to go forward. So then you look at, you know, basically, in addition to the financial impact benefits, when you look at this compared to single-family housing, you look at the needs, you know, what are the needs of the community? And we had to look no further than your master plan. And your 2018 master plan had a land vision, goals, and actions, Goal 3 in the master plan. And I'm going to read it verbatim. It states, "Encourage diversified housing developments that are also contributive to the Billerica State mandated affordable housing stock and proactive to address specific housing needs in town, particularly that of seniors." The age groups that will increase most, 60 to 74-year-olds, and the 75-plus age group, which is, are expected to increase 46.8% to 51.4%, respectively, by 2035. These trends indicate that population in Billerica is aging, and the need for starter homes is likely declining, while the need for elderly housing may be increasing. This increases, although just a logical consequence of an aging population in a society where most people, on average, will live into their 80s. The expected population growth in Billerica, especially the increase in the elderly population, has important implications for housing planning and development. In addition to the general need for more housing units, special attention will need to be paid to housing needs of seniors and for housing stock that can adapt to the needs of an aging population. That's verbatim out of your 2018 master plan. Then the town also composed a housing production plan in effect from 2001 through 2025. The housing production plan in the community recites, in essence, verbatim, what is stated in the master plan as far as needs go. It's important to note that this is a rezoning article. It's not an article to allow this to happen. It's not an article that says it's going to happen tomorrow. It's an article that allows a future possibility after consideration is given by the town. If it eventually passes, it's also not allowed until a special permit will be issued by the planning board for that use. So it doesn't create it as a by right use. It would have to go before the planning board as well. As I've already mentioned, 15% of these units would be SHI. If single-family homes were to ever go on that property, none of them would be affordable. The by right, no affordable component. Currently, according to the state, Billerica's SHI, which is your housing inventory, subsidized housing inventory, is at just under 11%. So you are protected from Chapter 40B developments at this point, because you've reached that goal. But new censuses are in progress, and, you know, when you start adding 45 homes, you start adding non-affordable inclusionary zoning with those, your numbers are going to go down, and potentially, you could tickle below that 10%, which makes the town vulnerable to Chapter 40B developments again in the future. Not only does the 15% for elderly housing keep you in line, it matches the 10%. It actually increases your stock to take that number up and increase it. So, you know, our goal would be, if this were passed, would be to work with the administrative staff. We've already talked to them, not in detail, but about our concepts and ideas. To work with the planning board and the neighbors to come up with a positive development impact, development for the community and everyone, every stakeholder. I want to stress, this probably sounds familiar to you, because there was some discussion about this last year, and it ended up being taken off town meeting before it went forward. And last year was different. It was a different scenario, because there was a sibling article to this that had been presented last year. That sibling article, the property is currently subject to a restriction for golf course use, as you're probably aware of. Last year, there was a sibling article that asked to authorize your board to release that restriction at the same time. So it would have been two votes at town meeting, one to change it to the overlay, one to release the restrictive covenant. There's no request for that second one this year. The only thing that's requested is the change to the underlying zoning. So no request to release any restriction that's on the property. There's also a right of first refusal on the property that your board has control over. No discussion on that. No request to release that at this point. Alls that this article does, it provides a necessary justification for my client and his associates to allocate funds towards strategic planning aimed at meeting all of the stakeholders' expectations and earning potentially a special permit and potentially a release of that covenant. So, you know, everyone says, when we talk about this, well, show us what you're going to do. Well, honestly, if the underlying zoning, if the overlay is not put on there, my client, Swanson Meadows, can't spend the money. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to put together plans to present for consideration. If that zoning is in effect, there's no justification to do that. If the zoning passes, they're willing to do that, then they would be back in front of the community, in front of the neighbors, and say, here's what we've got. We'd like to go, we'd like to earn a special permit, again, a discretionary permit, and we'd like to earn consideration of release of the covenant, and we'd like to earn the waiver of the right of first refusal. The ball is in your court on all of that, not my client's. So there is, you know, we've had a neighborhood meeting on this. We had a planning board hearing, which was very, very good. The planning board split on this. It was a 3-3 vote. So one of the members wasn't there that night. And, you know, some of the talk that you, you know, that we've heard is, well, this, what about this? What's going to happen to the clubhouse? What's going to happen here? We don't know. You know, that's just all premature. That comes with the planning, where a lot of money has to go in. And guess what? If we swing and miss on the planning, you're going to say, good try, go try again. And so that's where we're coming from on this. And I would say, you know, there's benefits to the entire town here. Obviously, whenever you have change in a neighborhood, people in the neighborhood maybe don't want it or are concerned about it. I get that. I respect that. That's normal. But this is an entire community with huge financial potential impacts, huge opportunities, and it's 100 acres. So, you know, it should be more than, you know, a few people to decide the direction and opportunities for the entire town, especially when it comes to fiscal impacts. So thank you for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
A quick question. How many, if we, if it wasn't 55 plus and it was just single houses, how many did you say could fit on?
Approximately 45.
45 single?
45, yep. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abutters.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Welcome back, Janet.
There's a few things, there's a few things that I wanted to say. The planning board did vote to not recommend. It was a tie, because Marley was not available. There are 60 acres on the golf course. 40 of the acres are behind the golf course. So it's not, and those are the ones that we think are toxic. The single-family would be in association also, so there'd be no trash collecting or snow plowing there. I have no idea what I wrote there. 15% of the single-family houses would be affordable as well. They're saying, last year, it was supposed to be about $1 million for the houses. This year, they're saying 875 to 900,000, which a lot of Billerica elderly, they can't afford that. I thought that the police and fire and ambulance calls, those stated quite low. I didn't quite believe that. There's other locations in Billerica that'd be more appropriate for elderly housing than to squish it in between us, if you see on that plan. Because now we're, we would be a city unto itself if you put 192 units, even at 160. But they'll be more than 160 if this goes through. And we bought our houses based on the fact that we were in a rural residential area, and it would go back to that. So it's really very unfair to us. And a correction on what Mr. McGrath just said. Last year, there were two articles. One article was to change the zoning and release the covenant, and the second one was to release the town's right of first refusal. So now they're trying to just do, okay, just change the zoning, because they're trying to piecemeal it, which is, once you, if town meeting lets this go through, then we're going to be in front of that planning board with a large amount of units.
So I had mentioned earlier that we sent a letter to all of you. I hope every one of you had a chance to look at it. One of the concern I have is the covenant clarification that we sent an email to the attorney. We still haven't heard from it about the 30-year limit. There is a question mark about that clarity. There's no clarity about the expiration after 30 years. So that's a number-one question that we have, and we would like to have a town council, you know, clarify that. The other concern is the environmental, the dumping of the DuPont on some of the properties. How that area is going to be used, that is a number-one concern, especially if you are proposing for 55 and above community or for anybody. So that clarification needs to be also be considered. We would like that. The other thing is to talk about the affordability for the 55 and above. I mean, our condominiums that are more than 20 years old are going between 730 and 780. There's, you know, that's 20 years old. A new town, I mean, new 55 and above, their conservative price is 875, as mentioned earlier. How many people, 55 and above, will be able to afford it? And can that property handle the septic system, or the roadways, or many other things that would go along with it? We know the constructions done by this builder specifically, Phase 1 and Phase 2. Do you want to reward the same builder who has built a system that is failed in within 10 years? The roof, the porches, the septic, you know, the Phase 2 had to pay $1 million to get it done, repaired. So that's a lot of issue that this, you know, construction company, or they have done it. So why would you reward them? And all the other concerns that we have mentioned in the letter. So what we are requesting is that let, have the town council, you know, respond to it, rather than voting it tonight. Let's just wait, get all that thing cleared up before rushing to vote on it. That's what my request. Thank you.
Any other butters? Just confirm, this is just for the zoning, not the actual plans of what would go on? Or we still have that for some refusal?
Yeah. My name is Ralph Dalton. I'm sorry, like I just had a little operation this morning on my larynx here. Basically, we've been looking at what we should be putting in the back of our homes for quite a long time, years. There's been an awful lot of, like, different developmental ideas, like, presented, and they've been, like, basically turned down over the years. And we kept at it, and, like, we kept talking to town officials. And we have worked hard to find out what is best for the town, that the town residents and the abutters. And I think that this is an unbelievable project. Right now, we have 80 units on about 10,000 square feet each. Is that correct? 44 in Phase 1, 36 in Phase 2. We have 60 acres. The density would be a lot less with the new development, much less. And like, this is a possibility, you know? We're not looking to shove anything down anyone's throat. This is a possibility. And if you look at it down the road, three, four years, can you guarantee me that there would not be a, like, 40R back there? Right now, it's zoned such that sporting could be all done in the back there, down the road. Of course, it has to be approved by the town. But like, we're giving everyone, and this was presented at the, like, planning board, we want to talk. They said, you should go back and you should talk. And that's what we want to do. We want to talk with the developer. My God, we're only on A. We're not on Z. We want to talk. I remember when we had some golf balls, you probably remember my face, trying to hide. And basically, the town couldn't help us. They said, it's a neighbor's problem. You know, basically, it's up to the individual homeowners to talk to the, like, golf course. And many people said, well, you bought a home in a golf course. I'm not sure that the owners of the golf course really had to pay for us to re-side Building 5. And certainly with, you know, a nice 55 and over, like, community, all those buildings would not certainly be hit by a golf ball. I'm on the first tee, so I guess, unless there was a big wind, I would never get hit. But like, we worked to get, like, build- But, like, we worked to get, like, Building 5, like, re-sided. The developer put up a new net. Didn't have to put up a new net, but we kept at it. We took the advice of the town and said, "Work with your neighbor, work with your neighbor." And we went back, and I guess we were pestering them enough that, like, we got some results. And we like to bring this forward so that we have this opportunity again over the next two, three years to work with the developer. And I'm going to tell you something. When I moved in there 23 years ago, we had assigned a paper that there was a recycling plant back there. And there was a restriction when I bought my home. If someone didn't see those two things, they should get a new attorney. Thank you.
Any other abutters? I think Al has handed up for it.
The gentleman in the back.
Yep. Al, you want to come up? Did you want to?
In the back, right.
Oh, okay. Do you want to come up? Oh, sorry. The other gentleman, Janet, the other gentleman behind you. I think he, sorry, Al, I think he was up first, sir.
You know, I am very bewildered. My name is Al Tassoni. As of yesterday, I was on the board, and I resigned. So, I want you to know, I'm speaking for my household, okay? I am in all favor of over 55. So are some of the board members in favor of 55. But, they're going back to last year, when Article 34 and 35, but they were pulled, pulled because there wasn't enough information, and I was the sponsor of the articles, okay? And they keep going back to everything last year. They want guarantees. The contractor cannot give you guarantees. He can't give them guarantees on anything. He can give them a memorandum of agreement, a memorandum of understanding, that if this happens, yeah, I'll do this for you. But if he's a smart contractor, which I don't think they're dumb, they're not going to sign any paperwork that's going to do anything right now. And they want it done prior to, prior to the building of the condos, or whatever they're going to build, they're over 55. It's not going to work. They stand up here, and they say things, and I'm sick and tired of them going back to blaming Skipper, blaming this guy, blaming that. They never find fault on their own. They're always blaming somebody, and I'm sick and tired of it. She stood here and went back 20 years. Forget 20 years. I'm looking at today and forward. That's what I'm looking for. They worry about, there may be ambulances in there. Well, what can I do? Are the elderly, which God only knows I'm elderly, okay? Well, actually, you know that too. But, I mean, I'm just getting tired of it. We should stick to the subject at hand, and there's one thing I want to know. When is 3-3 a loss? That's what the planning board said. 3-3 is a loss. Why isn't 3-3 a win? Can you imagine the baseball game ending at 3-3, and me being the umpire, saying, "You won"? What's the other team going to do? It's going to be a brawl.
I agree with that, John.
But, you know, we got to stick to what's happening. We got to stick to the subject. Stop talking about the past. Let's look forward to the future. But they don't want to do that. Nobody wants to get together, okay? They want guarantees. There is no guarantees in life.
Thank you. The gentleman in the back, you had your hand up for a while, sorry. You could introduce yourself.
Hi, my name's Dan Clark. I'm from 218 Range Way. Just wanted to get up here, say that I oppose the rezoning. I'm all for affordable housing. I, you know, just bought my first home a few years ago here, and, you know, 800,000, not affordable. So, that's it.
Okay.
For the record, I'm pretty sure the 8, 900 was for the market rate, not the affordable, because there'd be 50%, that would be affordable. That wouldn't be...
That's not the proper formula.
Hi, everyone. Hi. I'm Chevalier Gobindarajalu. I also am a resident at 218 Range Way Road, and I just wanted to lend my voice that those of us that are here have been asked to represent our community with all the residents that oppose the zoning. So, I do feel like it's a little premature to do the zoning, and I'm not sure why the developer wants to spend a ton of time and resources when the residents are so against it. I also am not sure why 40B and 40R keeps getting thrown around, and maybe someone can help me understand it, but it does, I was under the impression that it wouldn't make sense to ever do something like that there, based on the research I've done about the 40B and 40R projects that have been approved. So, I feel like, a lot of the residents feel like they've been pressured to, pressured to work with them, and pressured to help release the covenant before it's over, and I think that's part of why there's a little bit of bad faith, is that people have had experiences where they feel like they are acting out of fear that something worse or something bad will happen if they don't go along with it. And so, it's just not, it's not a situation that's based on, doesn't seem like it's based on trust and goodwill, but it's not that anyone, everyone is against anything at all ever happening. It's just sort of the way that it's been happening, I think, that is making people clench up a little bit. I think people are concerned about how dense it's going to be, and then it doesn't make sense to have this such a densely populated area, and it's literally something that's going to be so disruptive, upsetting as well, but very disruptive to the residents, to the community, and to the environment as well. And we believe it would be a much bigger strain on the infrastructure than really almost anything else that you could do. And I know that, I also think that, you know, there are other ways to make, to do things that are financially sustainable. I know that Mr. McGell speaks a lot about the tax revenue and things like that, but I think there are other ways. I feel like there has to be a way to figure out a solution at some point that will work for everyone. I don't think anyone is trying to just be contentious just to be contentious. But I also want to say that I, I think 55-plus housing is a valuable asset. I do agree with that, and I think everyone does. But I think the residents, none of us feel like this is the way. Having a home that's abutting a golf course raises your, the value, raises the value of the home to around 15% to 30%, and that's a pretty, that's a pretty big factor as well, is that people realizing that their home value is going to depreciate, whether or not, I mean, real estate's always going to go up, but I think that's another issue that we have. And I want to say, even though I think 55 senior housing is valuable, I have family that's worked in elder care for many, many years, and that's, and I'm pro that for sure. But as far as this being the place to do it, I'm not, I'm not convinced, I'm just not convinced. And what is also really, really incredibly valuable to me and to all of us is open land and green space. That's really the ultimate amenity, when you think about it, because we have land that contains wetlands, we have protected species there that use that golf course as their habitat. We're concerned about that because we don't feel like that aspect of it has been looked into very much. And once the land is gone, it's gone. So, I would just urge us to really, really think about moving forward with development. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'll try to keep the shot. I know many of them have expressed our concerns, but one of my biggest concerns is, and it is great for the town, it is great for the people of the town, but it is really not great for the abutters. That's what it seems to be. You know, there's an overwhelming majority of the abutters, 76.35% and 80, 7.5% on Phase 1 and Phase 2, not wanting this. So, there is a really good reason why, or many good reasons, why this is, why they don't want this. So, I think, and there may be something to do with the trust, because one of the things that I'm thinking about is, there are problems now with the noise and so on, that some of us feel, not all of them, but if the current problems are not addressed, when you scale it up, is that, are those problems going to be scaled up? And if you're not going to be working with us to fix these problems now, when it becomes such a big project and a lot more problems, then, you know, we'll be doing 50% of the phone calls to the police department like we've been doing the past three years for noise violation. So, these are the concerns. I think there are many concerns besides this. So, if people would explain to us what is going on with that DuPont dump back there, and it is not going to affect us when buildings start building, you know, the wetlands will be preserved, the conservation land is preserved, so there are so many questions that we don't have answers to. And I think if we, if people are willing to work with us and then go forward with the rezoning, maybe everybody will agree to that, but right now, we just don't have the information or the trust. That's where this is coming from. Thank you.
Good. The planning board vote uses Robert's rules, you probably know this, but just for the audience, which in that fact, a tie means a fail. So, that's how that worked. When it came to, Ralph Delden mentioned about the developer fixing the golf ball damage. Well, actually, he wasn't going to, and it was published in the newspaper, and the town got involved. Matter of fact, Ralph Delden was in the center of the picture in the Boston Globe, and that's why the developer ended up fixing things and putting up the screen. And when it comes to the animal habitat, I can tell you, there are deer and foxes and rabbits, and I'm not exaggerating. One day, out of the pond, a tortoise this big, the granddaddy of tortoises, with a neck this fat on him, came, because I'm in the back building, so I can see it, came across, and that'll all be disturbed. There's conservation land right beside me, it's a wetland, and that's where he was going.
Mr. Speaker, we'll try to...
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to clarify a couple of things. Vote to planning board is not a fail. The planning board has to make a recommendation at town meeting, and it was a split vote. So, my guess is, having experience in this, they'll write a recommendation that will explain both sides, but it's not a negative recommendation by the planning board. That's not the way.
True.
They did not recommend it. I watched that meeting.
It's not, it's, their vote does not constitute a negative recommendation to town meeting. Their tie vote does not do that.
It's a loss.
It's not a recommendation, and I stand by that. That's my opinion. It's not a recommendation. The statute says they have to make a recommendation.
They voted not to recommend it. It's not going, it's in our...
The vote was whether...
I watched the meeting, I watched the vote.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the vote was a motion to recommend, right?
Right, and it was a 3-3 split. And they told your client that it would not be recommended.
They didn't state, also, I'll tell you is this, was there a motion to not recommend it?
They told your client that it was...
Was there a vote not to recommend it?
Listen, Counselor, this isn't court.
Well, you're, you're, I'm coming, I'm just telling you what my position on that is.
And they told your client they were not recommending it to town meeting.
Okay, so, we differ in opinions on that, but in any event, with all due respect, you know, I know this board represents the whole town, and that was the conversation of the planning board. We've had meetings with the neighbors. They're nice people. I like them. Honestly, if I lived next to a golf course, I wouldn't want anything either. Who would? Right? And I think that's what you're kind of hearing here. So, you know, I just want to be clear, no one's trying to force anything on anybody. The town has control here. We don't have a right to a zoning change. We're asking for it. So, the town is in control of this. It's not us. And I just want to, some corrections. I think there was a statement that, that if it was a residential subdivision, that the town wouldn't be doing the snow plowing. I don't think that's the case, okay? I think there was a statement that if it was a residential housing development, that there would be affordable units. I don't think that's the case, okay? But I think that's illegal. I know it is. There was a mention about the value, that before it was stated $1 million that they would be worth, our financial analyst took, you know, what he thought was conservative, because he didn't want to misrepresent the tax revenue to the town. So, you know, in essence, if they're going to be worth more from a tax revenue case, it would be, it would be more value. I'm telling you here today, and we're on the record, because it was stated 192 units, so if this zoning goes forward, when a special permit, if it was filed at the planning board on behalf of my client, it will not be more than 162 units. So, anyone could be at that planning board hearing, saying, "What are they trying to do with this rezone now doing 192 units?" Okay? That is on the record. As far as, you know, we heard about the, you know, one thing I do have to protect is my client's integrity, because they've said the quality of his building, but then they're saying how much the values of their condominiums have gone up. And by the way, some of these things on rotting on rails, these buildings were built, what, 25 years ago? I mean, that's, some of that stuff is normal maintenance that takes place. No one's rewarding my client anything by doing this. This is, as I said, a possibility, a possibility for everybody. Possibility for him, a possibility for the town, possibility for everything, everybody. And I have to say this, you know, and this was discussed at the planning board, if you watch the video. It's been your master plan. You know, communities do master plans, and then when it's convenient, say, just kind of put it aside. Well, the master plan talks about the need for senior housing. This is a perfect opportunity to create a great discussion for senior housing and a great possibility. And another thing that was mentioned was density. The way, as I mentioned, a 55-and-older development would be developed, would be much more, less dense for the land, a lot more open space compared to a single-family development. So, I just wanted to clarify those things. And again, you know, I apologize, we differ on, you know, with the planning board. Maybe you can, I think, I think the town planner is here, perhaps she can clarify that for us, and if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected, but that's my position on it. So, I'm kind of interested to see what her position would, if you would indulge that, Madam Chair, to hear from her on that.
Could you stand there for one second? Like, may I approach? I think that if you look at the, like, video from the, like, planning board, you will find out that the biggest issue that was there was brought up, that there was a particular plot of land that was in perpetuity. And many of those people that voted that night voted because they didn't want to vote on something illegal. So, look at the video, and, like, what you see, and you make your own determination. Like, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you want to speak? Do you have that answer? I don't want to put you on the spot here.
What was the specific question, Chair?
What was this?
What was the recommendation? What the result was? What the result of the town meeting?
Absolutely. So, the motion was a positive motion to recommend, so that motion failed, so they did not recommend a positive recommendation. I believe what he's saying is they similarly did not make a negative motion, so they did not vote to negatively recommend either.
Thank you. It still resulted in no recommendation. Is that correct?
There is not a positive recommendation.
There's no recommendation. Thank you.
Tell me, what would your recommendation be? Would you report by the planning board at the town meeting? Right. I got it on the app there.
I'm going to take off. I'm not sure I have to take my friggin' tires and my goddamn mic.
If you have any other questions on the zoning or the processes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Board discussion?
Yep. Second one, Rosa.
Yeah, so, I got a, Ralph and Al, I like both you guys. You're good guys, but I got to tell you, I've spent a lot of years meeting with both of you, when you're complaining about Rocco Skipper with the golf balls and the net, and whether the corner of the net is on your property or their property and all of that. And Al, I remember when you asked me to get you the... And Al, I remember when you asked me to get you the plans for the fire hydrants, because you guys were trying to test them, and come to find out that they weren't, some of them weren't even plumbed in, and I got you a roll of plans, they must have been three inches thick, and you didn't have a lot of good things to say then. I don't understand what the big shift is to be pushing this.
Pushing what?
Pushing this overlay, you know. I almost get insulted when the attorney says, "Ah, you're not doing anything but just giving us options, putting an overlay on." You have to be stupid to think, if somebody has an opportunity to build, whether it's a hundred and ninety or a hundred and sixty-something units, at eight hundred and fifty or nine hundred thousand dollars versus single-family homes that may be one point two million, the math adds up that you're going to do more, make way more money with the higher density. So, we all know which direction this is going. To try to play it off and say, you know, this just gives us an option. Let me tell you what else it does. When you don't take, you're right, we have the right of first refusal on this property. When you're able to build a hundred and sixty-four townhouses on there, you've elevated the value of that property. So if the town was ever to exercise their right of first refusal, it would be exponentially more expensive for the town to purchase that property at a hundred and sixty-four townhouse overlay than it would be forty-five homes that are rural residentially zoned, which is fifty thousand square feet with two hundred feet of frontage. I don't know where you were spouting off a lot of statistics there, and I wished you had provided a copy of that to the board, so we could actually look at it and follow along. I don't agree with a lot of the analysis that you came up with about fire calls, police calls, and paramedic calls. In Billerica, when the paramedics are called, the first responders are usually the police, then the fire department, and then the paramedics. All three respond. So, that's gonna, if you got sixty-something increases to one, more than likely, you're gonna have sixty-something increases to all of them. So, those sound artificially low. I know a lot of the police, and I know a lot of our firefighters, and I know where they do a predominant amount of their calls, which are high-density complexes. So, then you want to argue the tax ramifications. Yeah, there'll be added tax revenue. But the more homes you own, that you build on there, the more water we're going to use. Billerica has its own water treatment plant, not designed to ever expect to have that kind of density there. That's an impact to the town and an expense. I support, Al, and when you wanted to do the sewer, you guys, another big complaint was the failing septic system. I worked with you guys to get town meeting to approve a sewer betterment, to help all of you guys get town sewer. That's in the process. The bid's gone out. I think the design is done, and that's going to get constructed, which is why you have a waiver on your septic system, that you don't have to do the work to it. So, these, going from forty-five homes, and even if you want to say every one of them had an ADU, that brings you to ninety. That's still significantly less than a hundred and sixty-four. And I don't know where this plan came from, from Williams Dresser &amp; Way, that's got a hundred and ninety-two listed on here, but whatever. It's still significantly less, which means less water, less sewer impacts. Yeah, there may be schoolchildren. One of the things we always hear when people want to push high-density developments like the Val, "Oh, there's not going to be that many schoolchildren." They don't really impact a lot. You know, and the other thing is, when you're talking about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars per unit, you are correct. One of our single largest growing demographics in Billerica is our seniors. And knowing a lot of them, one of their big issues is being able to afford their homes. This is a lateral move. Maybe some of them might get a little more for their house, but in all intents and purposes, it could be a lateral move or more expensive. So those seniors that are having problems with paying taxes and water bills and sewer bills and all that, this doesn't help them, you know. So, I am not in favor of this whatsoever. I have been a, I've said that consistently. I actually would like to see, since the town has the right of first refusal, to work something out where we purchase the golf course and run it municipally. A lot of towns have municipal golf courses that operate profitably, and I think that could be an opportunity here as well. But I do not, I could go through this document and talk about the government, and in perpetuity, and the contamination from the medical facility, and all of that stuff, but the bottom line is, Billerica is with ADUs, which the attorney is correct. You know, and I brought this issue up multiple times, and everyone said, "Ah, it's not going to be that big a deal." We already got eighteen of them built in Billerica since February, when it was finalized, and there's a lot more in the pipeline. That's going to be a huge impact to the town. We've been hit with MBTA communities. That's twenty-three hundred units jammed down our throat. We're going to deal with it at some point, because if somebody can build a whole pile of townhouses on an acre, fifteen townhouses on a one-acre lot, that house may be worth one point two on a one-acre lot. It's worth a hell of a lot more when you can build fifteen townhouses and sell them at nine hundred or whatever thousand dollars apiece. It's going to be coming. You know, and as far as 40B is concerned, yeah, we're at, I think at ten point three percent. We're just over, excuse me, just over the threshold, but that's another unfunded mandate that was jammed down our throat. At some point, the town has to take control of things that we can control. I would rather see forty-five single-family homes there at fifty thousand square feet and two hundred feet of frontage, than a hundred and sixty-four units that we never planned for with our water treatment sewer treatment plant. And, that's how I feel. I don't support this, and I don't think that this is smart for the town, because if it passes, and we should want to exercise our right of first refusal, our cost would be greatly increased. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just...
I have one more, please.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Mr. Rose, I'm ashamed of you. You're no friends of ours. You were...
We're not going to insult each other here.
Huh?
We're not going to insult each other.
Okay, okay, like he, but no, like he brought up my name, saying that he helped us get a betterment. He didn't help us when Kennedy Meadows went by our condominiums, and we couldn't hook up. And we had Phase Two failing, and I was, they only last twenty years. So you're no friend of us. I even think that you broke the law, because the bylaws of the town say, if you have a town sewer go by your house, and it's within five hundred feet, you can hook up. I'm ashamed of you.
Madam Chair.
This is going sideways. I want to...
Madam Chair, I need to, but I need to respond to that.
Don't know. We're going to stick to the agenda.
No, I was attacked on something that I was very involved in.
You guys can have a cup of coffee and discuss this outside of the meeting. I'd like to stick to the agenda.
I was publicly attacked and want to have an opportunity to respond.
You're not being recognized right now. We need to keep going.
Madam Chair. So, this is the fifth time that Swanson Meadows has come before us since I've been elected. We voted on it three times last year. We voted no. In March, specifically on March twelfth, I came here to pick up some documents after, three weeks after we had voted no, and the former town manager was having a private meeting with Mr. Sippa, and his son, and another individual. When I asked why that was occurring, because we had voted no as a board, I was told that it was done at the instruction of the chair, and that can all be corroborated through the investigative report, because it was included in there as a complaint against me for asking the question about why an individual select board member was instructing the town manager to meet privately with developers about a property that we voted no on multiple times. So since then, it has come back before us again. We have an opinion from town council that states that it was a requirement of this board to make an affirmative vote to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing. That didn't happen before the public hearing took place. We have a submission from the opponents that include multiple restrictive covenants, not just one, not just the right of first refusal. They include restrictive covenants in perpetuity that says that Rangeway Farm LLC will construct no greater than eighty two-bedroom townhouse style condominium units on parcels one and two, and nothing greater than a nine-hole golf course, and structures appertuent thereto. And it says, regardless of any future units of greater size, or golf course of greater size, which may otherwise be allowed by the zoning bylaws of the town of Billerica, or any superseding state or federal laws or regulations. So that's just one of the restrictive covenants that's in perpetuity, okay? And it goes on to say that the conservation restriction is in perpetuity, the sixty-one B right of first refusal does not have an expiration date, and Mr. Rocco Sippa signed power of attorney over to the select board in perpetuity. And all of these documents are in our packet here. But most importantly, there is an industrial use restriction on parcel B, which is one of the parcels within the plan that they submitted here, and the woman gave us a copy of the plan earlier. Parcel B was originally a part of a hundred and twenty-seven acres that has been split out and subdivided, and other communities have been built on, such as Sumner Farms and Falcon Estates. It was originally owned by New England Nuclear Corporation, and then sold to DuPont. And in that industrial use restrictive covenant, they use the word forever, that no residential housing shall be put on this land forever, because amongst other things, there's a list of reasons why, one of them is waste dumping. So, we can talk about our master plan, and our housing production plan, and all of this stuff, and it is important, and I do support affordable housing. I own an affordable unit. I know the formula. You're talking about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for an open market sale? Well, an affordable unit is going to be sold for six hundred thousand. Not three. That's not how HUD and CHAPA work. So, the point of all of this is that this is the fifth attempt to get around the right of first refusal, and they're getting more creative, and more creative, and more creative. We said no. So now, it's a whole other plan, and it's convoluted and confusing on purpose, in my opinion at this point. So absolutely, I will not be supporting this. I've already voted no against it. And I would actually request that the documents that were submitted in our packet tonight be sent to town council for review, so that we can make sure that all of this is worked out before it ever moves forward to town meeting. Thank you.
And right of first refusal, it ends 2029? Is that correct?
There is no documentation to support that statement.
But it has nothing to do with this article. This is just a zoning change to add an elderly use, an elderly housing overlay to certain parcels like that?
Yeah, I guess my point was, like, in terms of, I don't know, in my opinion, if you...
I believe that's correct.
If we...
That date that you said, somewhere around that.
Somewhere around that. If we could get proof of that. My concern is, is that if we, you know, it seems like, I'm learning here, over decades, we keep shutting down whatever plan, you know, however creative or confusing they may be, that come 2029 or whatever date that we can prove, you know, right now, they, you know, we have right of first refusal, we can have control over this. What I worry about is that we piss them off, and then come 2029, they do whatever they want with the property, and then we have no leg to stand on.
Madam Chairman, there was somebody online that had raised her hand, but didn't get a chance, so I just wanted to mention that.
Oh, okay. Is there someone?
If I may? The only thing they can do there is rural residential fifty thousand square foot lots with two hundred feet of frontage. So to say that they can do whatever they want after 2029 is not an accurate statement. They can do that now, or they could do it, you know, after 2029, but that's all they can do unless something like this is approved. Then you give them dual zoning. They could do either one at that point.
There's no documentation to support the 2029 date. All of the documentation says that it's in perpetuity. So unless, and that's another question, like, can you produce the documentation that shows that it expires in 2029? Because there's nothing here.
Can I answer that? So, a couple of things. So, the first document you referred to, the one about the golf course and the eighty units, can you point to me in that document where the word perpetuity is?
Yeah.
In that document?
Absolutely.
Maybe I missed it.
Through the chair. Yeah, am I recognized?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I don't know, just, based on where this is going, it's like, this isn't a public hearing, it's been treated as that, you know, the board's kind of all over the place. Can we just have each member say their point and then move on? Because ultimately, we don't have a say here. It's not our article, it's a petitioner's article. Ultimately, it will be up to a majority of town meeting. I wanted to share my thoughts quickly, if the rest of the members could, and then you could, and then, I think that's the best way to move forward with this, because we're getting nowhere, it's almost eleven o'clock, we have another big chunk of the agenda to get through. So that's my suggestion.
Well, I think she's trying to find that word.
I think that listening to the residents is important. I don't think it's getting nowhere. They have seventy-eight and eighty-five percent of the HOAs that are already on the property are against this, and they have the right to speak on it.
Can the rest of the board speak? There's two minutes been talking the whole time.
I don't know if she was able to find that word or not, just for...
I think she's still looking for them. Go ahead, John.
It wasn't in there?
It's in here. You know what? The documents are public. Go ahead and download them and review them yourself.
I'm going to be very careful. So let me just state, this is our position, because I know you're going to go to town council, which I would suggest you do, because I cannot, obviously not give you any legal advice, but under the state law, restrictive covenants are limited to thirty years.
Okay.
Okay? The word perpetuity is not in that document. It's nowhere to be found.
It is.
Okay? And, all right, well, we disagree on that, but I'm sure, I'm sure, that's the conservation restriction. That only covers a four thousand square foot piece of land on that property, which is a hundred thousand acres. It's a tiny little piece we're not planning to develop. I bring these documents with a fine-tooth comb. I know...
Very last page is the power of attorney that was signed over.
Good luck with the power of attorney, without...
I'm just saying, it was signed over to us.
I know you're going to go to town council, that's fine. I would suggest you do, and I'm happy to talk to them, to convey our position on it. Maybe that will be helpful. I certainly can't give advice to your board, but we're very comfortable that upon 2030, there'll be no restrictions on this property, except for the right of first refusal. Right of first refusal doesn't go away, because that's, because that's a way, that doesn't expire in two thousand...
That's exactly what I said.
And then the final thing is, the comment on the affordable units, those are restricted. They can't sell for whatever you want. They're defined under the inclusionary zoning of your bylaw. That's how the consultant came up with that three hundred, ten thousand dollar price. We can't determine what those are. That's regulated by the state.
Right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rather than trying to debate which easements and which restrictions are what, I will tell you that there is already rural residential zoning here. It is either developed, or it is not, at whatever year it is developed or not. The only question before you, before town meeting, before the planning board, before the abutters, is, is your vision for the property, single-family or elderly housing? That is really the only thing at question with this article. Thank you.
Make my, yeah, so, my thoughts on this, you know, whole situation, again, as I stated previously, not quite sure that it was the best to go down this road, because ultimately, it's not a select board decision. We don't have any say here. No say. It's ultimately elected representative town meeting. The two hundred and forty seats at town meeting, which makes it the town as a whole makes zoning decisions. It will be a majority vote of town meetings that decides this. Not us. We can make a recommendation, sure, but that has no weight. And, but my thoughts on this, my thoughts on really any sort of matter of this nature is, I'm for freedom. I'm for pro-business. And I don't say that just as a word. I want to support policies that let businesses invest money in this town. And if there's clear past history of interest in this sort of part of town, in a company, or a potential for a company to be willing to invest upwards of hundreds of a million, of a hundred million dollars in the town of Billerica, which would bring millions and... $100 million in the town of Barriaca, which would bring millions in future tax revenue, we should be looking at, how do we get this person to invest money in our town? Not to find every nit bit and piece to shoo them away. We, we need new growth in the town of Barriaca to support our financial goals, to support our education system, to support our town government. And, and this project, or any sort of, or not this project, this zoning, any sort of zoning that would allow for elderly housing process, is gonna have positive effects on the community. It's gonna bring, improve your tax base, it's gonna bring money into the town of Barriaca. It's also gonna free up potential single-family homes, so that the next generation, younger, earlier families can then invest money in, and then, can then buy a, buy a, buy a home, because it's freed up, because someone has downside into a community that best fits, you know, a retiree. When it's a 55-plus, you don't have school kids, so that argument is, is that it's gonna burden up your schools, burdening up the schools, nonexistent. The argument, traffic, 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 sewer, sewer, sewer. This is called an nivism argument, not in my backyard. And we, we, we can't say this, we, because if it's not in this area, then the people that live next to one area will say, it's not for me. We need to look at things in a realistic approach. The petitioner of this article is not creating some new crazy zoning district that allows them to anything. It's already a zoning bylaw that we have in our town zoning bylaws. And what it would do would just place the overlay on this list of parcels, so that in the future, someone could use, have more freedom, more decision-making, to use their property in the way that they best fits. Because we live in a market economy, and what we have is, government is restricting what private property owners can doing, can be doing with their property, a crazy amount, and it's leading to a housing crisis. It's leading to inadequate development. Look at our town. If we want to see this as a pragmatic approach, we have a huge, huge portion of our town land used as single-family housing. We don't see people freaking out about all the land used for single-family housing. We just don't see it. We need to have diverse living situations, so that we can have a Barriaca that works for the vast majority of people, that can help boost our local economy, because when you, when you do something like this, it's injecting millions and millions of dollars into your town, and that spreads out in so many different ways. I wish the approach of this was that there was a collaborative approach with the town, like, the elected officials supported a collaborative approach to come to an agreement, so it's actually the town supporting this and bringing this forward, because it creates a different dynamic. But I don't know what you're supposed to expect when the town doesn't do that, when the elected officials just say, no, no, no. They're gonna bring something like this forward, and ultimately, it's gonna be a town meeting decision. And with the way that the state law says, because the state law triumphs, you know, our local bylaws, you only need a 50% plus one majority. It's not two-thirds anymore. That's, that's changed a few years back. So that's, ultimately, it's town meetings, say, we don't have a say. Again, not quite sure why we spent hours deliberating on this one. It's not even our decision. Thank you.
So I think we've all spoke our piece on this, and so let's move forward with the decision on this one.
You don't have to.
You didn't speak yet.
No, I was a quiet one, trying to.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wrote down a couple of words as people were speaking, you know, raise the worth of our house. Three speakers before that were talking about a clubhouse, loud music, not be able to go to sleep. Buying a house on a golf course. Open land, you know, I'm very familiar with this property, because 291, 293, that's where my grandparents' house used to be. It's now Patch Metal Lane. They sold it. There's about 16 houses up there. They built a log cabin over at 289. So we had 16 acres up there. So in the mid-'90s, when I was in my teens, riding a dirt bike, and a little before that, I had a VW Bug across the street from your house in the woods. And I didn't think I'd survive when they put a 55-plus community in my open land, where all these creatures, where these big turtles, these deers. I survived, and there's still a lot of deer over there. A lot of my friends go hunting pretty close to there. We're talking about a zoning change, all right? Zoning change. We're not talking about quality of construction, which passed the building inspectors, you know, inspections. You know, you look at the zoning that got changed at the mall, been almost six years, and they still haven't added a nail and a piece of wood up there yet. You know, we're talking about being part of the conversation. You can talk about police. I think there's 700 units over at Aspen. They average 300 first responder calls in a year. I actually did a FOIA request when they aggravated one time, I always wanted to see the strain on it, and that's whether it's people sleeping in cars, domestic or well-being check, maybe one a day. And usually, that's just a routine drive-through to see what goes on there. Enrollment's down. You want to be part of the conversation? I'm gonna tell you right now, if I bought a million and a half dollar home in Barriaca, I'm gonna have three kids with me, I'm gonna be filling every one of those bedrooms, and if I can afford that, I'm sure I can afford each one of my kids to have a car. But I still, I'm still tight with my money, so I guarantee you, I'm gonna put, you know, 900 square foot ADU in my backyard. And if I can, if I size it all right, there'll be two, and those will be built as a right. And you see in these other towns noticing, all right, let me get it, get it done before the government find, you know, the governor figures out that she screwed up doing this, because it's not in people's favors. 55-plus, you know, it works there. It's part of the discussion, you know, having the zoning change. It's not guaranteeing nothing. But I'd rather be part of the discussion. You know, I said it before, you know, 50, 45 houses go in there, you don't have any say in nothing. If I'm gonna put an addition on my house, you think I'm gonna go sign my neighbor's house, give him a new lawn, put in new bushes, side his house for him? No, he's gonna look at what I put into my house. So a property, a ha, property owner has that right to do what he wants, and, you know, I fully support a zoning change. It, it fits there, it works there. And if you look at tax, we're worried about keeping the lights on. We're, we're trying to bring tax dollars in, not send them out. And at the end of the day, you know, it's what's best for the town. You know, and I, I could say probably, oof, 25, 30 years ago, you know, there's a lot of farmers back in that area that weren't happy, and you know, the town failed ya. You know, when they allowed Hawthorne Assisted Living to come down that road and put up, what is it, 250 units over the old God driving range? You know, you guys could have all been hooked up, you know, to town saw, you know, saw back then. They put an undersized water line in there, they put an undersized pump post on the end of Sullivan Road. You know, you gotta look at the big picture, what's best for the town, and I think this wholly is. Thank you.
How many private meetings did you have in order to make this happen in the last six months? Did you disclose that to the board?
I, I was actually at one...
You didn't disclose any of them to the board, except for in our July 14th meeting, when you admitted to having a meeting about it?
I was at a meeting the other night at their house.
Right.
Make a motion to recommend Article 38.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Three, two.
Okay, then we have the last one. There's another petitioner's article. I don't know if anyone's here for this one, so I guess we'll...
But do we...
Put that play on on town meeting floor.
Okay.
Okay, so next on our agenda, we have a discussion and possible vote. And I'm sorry, we actually moved that forward to next meeting. Discussion and vote on gift acceptances. I'll, I'll just list them all, read them all through, and then I'll make a motion to approve them as presented. So first, we have donation to the veteran services. First donation is donation of a pizza oven to be used in office for veterans, estimated value $1,000. Second is donation for handicap ramp to be used for veterans, estimated value $1,000. Second category is Barriaca Public Library donations. First donation is donation of five Chromebooks, estimated value $1,875, to be used by the library. Second donation for the library is donation of 35 period packs, estimated value $40, to be offered to the public. Third donation of four $20 gift cards for Boom Boom Games for prizes in the teen summer reading program. Next donation of 15 gently-used board games, estimated value $500, to be used as prizes added to the library collection and made available in the teen section. Next donation of one NeuroShield board game, estimated value $40, to be added to the library collection. Next donation of 20 dental and period packs, estimated value $50, to be offered to the public. Donation of seven board games, estimated value $15 to $30 per game, to be used as prizes. And the last donation is donation of a bouquet of flowers, estimated value $45, to be displayed in the library. I'll make a motion to accept all donations as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. Next on our agenda, we have executive session, executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town managers' contract. So I'll make a motion to enter executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And as a note, we will be returning to open session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Vote Barriaca. Selectman Favreau?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burrows?
Aye.
House Secretary Dara Saucunner?
Aye.
Selectman Rosa?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. Okay. Meeting adjourned. We'll go into it.[1229.08] ...
September 22nd, we're calling our regular Select Board meeting back into session. Do I have to do, I don't have to do attendance?
No.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is discussion of possible vote on the town manager's contract. Make a move.
If I may, I think we should probably go over it, like let the people know what we negotiated.
It's public.
Well, they're not going to, they're going to, they're not going to see what the negotiation was because they're only going to see what's in the end contract.
Okay.
So, Slakman, Darius O'Connor and myself were appointed to the negotiating committee to negotiate with Mr. Dillon for his contract. We met on two occasions and we, Mr. Dillon presented a list of things that he requested and through the negotiations, we settled on the contract that we're about to approve. But just to give the residents an idea, he gets five weeks vacation. He was asking for 10 days buyback, which was reduced to five. The, an automotive payment of $600 a month, which was only $16 more than the previous con, two contracts of $584 a month. So we agreed to that. He wanted professional development, that he wanted to count, cover up to 10% of the town manager's salary towards continued education and/or professional development. And based on the salary that we settled on, that would have been $23,500. That was stricken. We agreed to the IMCA membership and two other professional associations. The town will provide the town manager the ability to, for a flexible schedule if he so chooses to continue with law school and/or other continued education opportunities with the approval of the Select Board. That, IMCA and the two other professional associations were consistent with all of the previous contracts. He was asking for an educational incentive of 7% for his master's in education and then upon completion of law school, an initial 9%. The 7% was consistent with the previous contract and stayed the same and we struck the 9% for the law school. He was looking for an employer contribution to the retirement plan to be 8% deferred compensation of the town manager's salary, which was, would have been a considerable amount of money. More, we settled on $10,500, which was $1,500 less than John Curran and $1,500 more than Clancy's previous contract. He was asking for $250,000 with 3% increases yearly. We settled on $235,000 based on surrounding communities of comparable size and population and looking at some of the department heads and what their salaries were. The 3% that he requested was reduced down to 2%. And then he had a request of, his salary shall be a minimum of 8% more than those he supervises. That language was completely stricken. The, he, we used to pay for a cell phone, now he'll get a phone allowance of $100 per month. And he asked for a uniform allowance or clothing allowance of $2,000, which falls in line with some of the other department heads and we negotiated that down to $1,500. He was also looking for longevity to begin with five years with the town and 3%, and that was stricken. And he also asked for $3,000 for a staff appreciation day, which we agree that we want to do staff appreciation, but we didn't think the $3,000 should be in the contract. And Mr. Dillon agreed, he can put that into the town manager's budget when he goes forward at town meeting. So that's the, with the exception of some other scribbler changes and just tightening up the documents, those are the dollars and cents overview of the contract.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the town manager's contract.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, discussion of possible vote on town council appointment.
Slakman, power, would you like to go first? You don't have to go at all, you know?
It's no secret that I have been unhappy with town council for a very long time. So, you know, I, I had started raising concerns last year and I just, I want to be careful about how I say it, but I am not in favor of renewing their contract.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I was very impressed with the interview that Harrington and Heap gave to the Select Board last Monday.
Agreed.
I was very impressed with their firm and that their, their specialty is municipal law, they're not a real estate law, they don't have 22 attorneys but only seven town council. I think they basically outperformed our current town council on basically every metric. And I don't mean this to be insulting, but I don't think our current town council has the competency to represent a town like Borica. They had the opportunity when they were contracted a year ago prior to when I was on the board and they failed that opportunity. And it's time for the town to move on and go with the better option. And I support appoint, voting to appoint Harrington Heap as town council, so I'll make a motion to appoint.
Do I get a chance to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you. So I, I don't, I don't think that it's going to be easy either way. I think whenever you bring in a new town council, there's always going to be hiccups. I articulated some of my concerns when we interviewed town council tonight. Harrington Heap is smaller in attorneys, but larger in the communities they represent, so I hope we don't have similar problems. But I do think that due to a lot of the stuff that went on with billing and the contract and what was covered and what wasn't covered, that there may be time to make a change. I will say, I don't think that, I do think that Brooks and Durensis is less expensive on their hourly rate for attorneys and for paralegals. I don't think we're going to save any money by doing this. And Harrington Heap did say that they would do a contract with us, which we should definitely do and lesson learned, we should tighten up some of the language in the moment we last did, so it's clear on both sides. But I think that there, it's, it's going to be expensive either way, but I, I do think that it might be time to make a change.
I will, Madam Chair, if I could, I just, I will say that I was very disappointed to hear that there's been a weekly report that I haven't received because it may have changed my opinion before today, you know, if I had been in, receiving that regularly and saw that, you know, they were following up on certain things because I did see small market improvements, but, you know, that being said, I still want to have copies of those because I want to see what was being done.
Any thoughts?
I, I will say that I was not here the entire time that our current firm obviously was representing the community. I will say that I've had some good conversations with Paul, who was here this evening. With that being said, I was very impressed with Harrington Heap as well. And I think that they will do, hit the ground running and do an amazing job and I, personally, I, I think that that's a good decision.
Good. Okay.
Yeah, I'm kind of, you know, I think talking about, you know, getting the legal bills. My first got on the board, I started asking Selectman Roser at the time about, you know, what the bills were for town council and that's when I started putting requests into Robert and Clancy, actually was there back then. And I'd get the reports every couple of months, I'd ask for the invoices just to see what we were being billed out at. And that's when I found out KP Law was paying, charging us for parking at town meeting, 50 bucks, so whack.
That's crazy.
You know, the car savings might not be there, but I think instead of paying someone to do something three times and, you know, giving a clear directive to the town manager, through the chair, it could be a saving in the long run and that response time, I think, would benefit for us. There are, you know, Noemi's been great, there's been some, you know, great stuff through Brooke and Durensis, I just don't feel they're the right fit to move forward with Borica and the new town manager.
Don, you don't have a specific motion for this, do you? No. Make a motion to appoint Harrington Heap as town council.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda, discussion of possible vote on the creation of a town council's contract negotiation subcommittee. Okay, I'll just make, I'll just make a motion to appoint, I'll make a motion to create a two-member subcommittee of the Select Board appointed by the chair.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approval of meeting minutes, we do not have these ready, we'll have those, I'm guessing by next meeting, but our meeting schedule, our next meeting is October 6, 2025. Following meeting scheduled for October 7, 2025, that's the night of town meeting, so that's as needed, as well as the October 9 meeting for town meeting as needed. And the meeting following that is October 2025. 11:48, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.